Members, as you know, this is a time certain for a briefing on the APD-DPS partnership. And before I call up the chief and others, let me say a few words about this. Since this city council came into office in January, we've been engaged in a deeply felt conversation about public safety and policing in our community. And that conversation has raised a lot of challenging questions and, I might say, absolutely no easy answers. As part of that conversation, we made an affirmative decision as a council not to adopt the four-year police contract in February because we wanted to allow voters to be heard on police oversight. We knew at the time that decision would have ripple effects on police staffing in a department that was already understaffed and overworked. Nevertheless, it was the right thing to do. It's our job as policymakers to manage the effects of our decisions, which is why we, as a council, unanimously approved an ordinance to shore up the pay and benefits of police officers even after the contract expired. And, as a council, we directed the interim city manager to craft a retention and recruitment incentive, which he did. Despite our best efforts, APD currently has more than 300 vacant officer positions, and that has very real implications on our ability to be responsive to the people of Austin when they call for assistance, when they are victims of crime. Our staffing challenge isn't likely to change anytime soon, even if we were to strike a deal on a four-year contract with the police union tomorrow. So how do we address the immediate needs of Austinites while we work our way through this appropriate conversation? The DPS partnership, which was started roughly four weeks ago and just a few days before our contract with the police expired, was intended as a bridge to get us to a long-term police contract by providing support and supplement to Austin police. It is up to us, if we want to recalibrate, to improve it as we go along and do things differently. In examining this partnership, I think it's important to consider that the supplemental staffing has shown very real results in faster response times for assistance and a reduction in violent crime. And, of course, none of us want to ignore the results that show our constituents who are calling in distress are being heard. The traffic enforcement, however, has been troubling. If there have been unintended or unwanted consequences, we must address them immediately. We want to ensure Austinites don't fear that they'll be racially profiled or targeted by this effort. I hope we have a productive discussion today. We have real need, and I hope we recognize as part of that discussion that we have real needs in public safety, that we can find ways to improve a program as we proceed with such a program, that you can have both desirable results and less desirable results at the same time, that you can recalibrate, such as deploying differently so that one place or a few places in Austin don't feel unduly targeted. And we can and we should continue to monitor using data, complete data, and receiving data on a consistent basis, because there may be other calibrations that we want to make as we move forward on this. As I'll end where I started. I think this council should be proud that it has been proactively addressing policing and public safety at, as I said, a time when there aren't easy answers. But the council has been geared toward action without a fear of addressing needs as they may arise. And, of course, that also includes the need for transparency. So we have started that with a previous briefing, with a previous memo. There's a new memo out from the chief. You've also been delivered a memo from Colonel McCraw, the director of DPS. And by the way, for those that want to see that, it's been put in the backup this morning, so it's available to people if you're online. With that, I'll invite Chief Chacon up and ask that he bring up anybody else that he would like to bring at this time. And I will say thank you to Colonel McCraw. As I indicated, Colonel McCraw is the director of the Department of Public Safety. I've had the pleasure of knowing him for a long time now, and I appreciate his willingness to be here and to visit with us as we seek out transparency. Chief, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members, city manager. My name is Joseph Chacon. I'm the chief of police here in Austin. Seated to my right is Dr. Jonathan Kringan. He is APD's chief data officer. And to my left is Colonel Steve McCraw, who is the director of the Texas Department of Public Safety. Happy to be here again, talking about this in, again, an air of transparency and sharing the data. You're going to see a lot of information today that is how, the application of this evidence-based approach. And so that it is clear, because I think that, you know, it certainly can be easy sometimes to misunderstand data. I want to start with a word of gratitude to the Department of Public Safety that has really stepped up the last month, is helping us to keep Austin residents safe. And as the mayor was talking about, we are examining the program as we go. We're making incremental changes as we need to, and we're going to continue to have those conversations. Just a quick overview of what we're going to present, and then I will turn it over to the director to make a few comments and a short presentation of his own. This is really just a review of, I'll start with a review of the partnership goals and objectives, as well as what the enforcement strategies actually look like. I'll turn it over to Dr. Kringan to talk about what outcomes we are seeing and talk about the calls for service, response times, what we're seeing happening with violent crime right now. He will be addressing the violent crime patterns. Again, that evidence-based approach that I was talking about, and then discuss what we're looking at for future reporting. We obviously are going to leave a lot of time for questions and answers. I will turn it over to Director McCraw prior to question and answer so he can make a short presentation, and then we'll be glad to answer any questions that the council might have. With regard to goals and objectives, this is just a restatement of what we have previously stated, really two main overarching goals, and that is reducing serious traffic injuries and fatalities. So obviously, I've been receiving many reports of high-risk driving behaviors that can lead to serious crashes. And so we've been providing that data to DPS to help with their deployment, as well as reducing instances of violent crime. We have seen increases in violent crime since COVID, and those have not gone down. And I think that there was, there's been discussion about what is happening overall with violent crime. And Dr. Kringan will be talking a little bit, a little bit more about that today. And then, obviously, the long response times, and this has been an issue for some time, the long response time to be able to get to 911 calls for emergency assistance. We'll be talking about what those calls have done over time. The enforcement strategies really, again, are around two main areas. The first being the traffic enforcement. Our initial focus really was on main roadways such as Interstate Highway 35, MOPAC, and 183. We have expanded those to include Highway 360, 290, and 71. And we are now adding other streets that are not necessarily those major roadways, but are still traveled quite a bit, and we are seeing much of the same behavior. So 2222, Southwest Parkway, South First, and South Congress, as well as William Cannon and Slaughter. On the violent crime reduction, this has been-
We need to advance the slide.
Well, yeah, I think I'm still on this slide, just going over the violent crime reduction piece, which is directed to the priority zero, calls for service. And those areas have been shifting as weekly we're examining the data to take a look at what the data is telling us, where those priority zero, the highest priority calls for emergency assistance are occurring. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Kringan to go ahead and start talking about what we've seen as outcomes.
Excuse me, before you do that, is this available somewhere? Because at least where I'm sitting, it's not that, it's much easier if I'm seeing it on my screen and I know there-
It should be in the backup. I believe that the presentation will be available in the backup.
It's not available now.
Also want a hard copy of it.
All right, thanks. I just want to continue the discussion about what's actually been happening and hopefully address any limited confusion that exists from our last discussion. What we're looking at here is what has changed. So we're looking through four weeks of full DPS deployment. So looking at the last week, what we saw, we saw about 14% lower emergency calls for assistance, right, compared to the same week last year. So there's been a lot of confusion about what comparisons are correct, so we're providing a lot of them. I'm going to explain them. And I'm going to acknowledge that these are not the comparisons that ultimately lead you to a statistical conclusion of causality that suggests that the DPS deployment has caused a reduction in violent crime and violent crime calls for service. So 14% lower compared to the same week last year, about 5% lower compared to the week before the partnership began, right? We're also indexing to the four-week average before the partnership began in case the particular week is in somehow, in some way peculiar, about 6% lower. And it's about 1% lower compared to what we saw as an average citywide for 2023 year-to-date. And so I'm going to explain shortly why that number goes down as we stretch that average out. It has to do with the seasonality that we see. We also see continued reductions in emergency response times, very similar results. We're looking at emergency response times under seven minutes and 20 seconds. So if you follow what we report for P zero response times, you'll know that our averages for the city have been ranging in the elevens in the areas where we try to maintain as rapid as possible a deployment. Prior to the DPS, we were looking at times in the vicinity of the mid-nines, right? So we see substantial reductions here in those areas where we are prioritizing trying to get to victims making phone calls as quickly as possible. As far as violent crime goes, we see continued reductions in Week Four as well. Approximately 26% lower than the same week last year, 35% lower compared to the week before the partnership began. I want to clarify, there's been a lot of confusion about the week before partnership began. There were 128 violent crimes that occurred in the week before the partnership began. So the change from that week to the first week, which was reported at 68, 67, yeah, 67, were remarkably substantial. Looking at the average of the four-week, it's about an 18% reduction. And looking at the 2023 year-to-date average, it's about a 15% reduction. So no matter what comparison we're making, what you see is a reduction across the board. Again, I'll discuss a little bit why it goes down to 15% when you're looking at the year-to-date. And we'll take a look at a little bit of data to help everyone try to understand that. So I'm going to show you a little bit of information. If you look at the picture here, what we have are the weekly counts of violent crime for each week going back to mid-April 2020. Now, there's been a lot of discussion about what this long-term pattern means. And when we do the Public Safety Committee meeting on the 22nd, we'll get into this in much more detail. We'll look at a longer time period, and we'll do a lot of breakouts to individual types of crime, right? And this is what we see. And so based upon this pattern, there have been a number of assertions that violent crime was trending down. It was trending down prior to the DPS deployment, so we're going to take a look at that. Actually, from a statistical standpoint, that is not true. This is just an average. Time series data drift up, they drift down, and most of it doesn't mean a tremendous amount. We have to look for substantial changes in order to understand whether something is truly going down. This series is relatively flat. Now, we have the beginning of April, we have the DPS deployment occurs. And so what we want to do to understand this is to take a look at what happens after the DPS deployment. In the first week, in the first week, we see a blue dot that's appeared, and the blue dot is right at average. That's because the very first week, which we are referring to as Week Zero, was a partial deployment. It was a limited number of days, and it was a smaller contingent from DPS as they prepared for full deployment in what we refer to as Week One. Week One begins in the first week of April, and what do we see? You'll notice the red dot, a substantially lower number of violent crimes. Week Two of the deployment, a substantially lower number of violent crimes. Week Three, we see regression. And you see a higher number than in Week Two at One and Two, but it's lower than the average overall. And in Week Four, our last week that we've measured, we see regression back toward what we would refer to as the mean after the change. The average after DPS here, the red dashed line, and again, I will emphasize, this is not how the statistical test is done, this is for explanation purposes. The red line is remarkably lower than the average that's the black dashed line that we've seen prior to DPS being here for several years, right? So let's take a look just a little bit further into this. Let's go back to April of 2020 and see what's happening. In April of 2020, in the third week, we see where the data begin. The data are around average. If we go to the fourth week of 2020, we see a substantial reduction. Notice that's the same pattern from Week Three of April to Week Four of April in 2023, a reduction because we have weekly patterns that play out in the data. That is why we do statistical testing as opposed to comparing a week to another week. If we look at that period, it's really inconclusive. Is it actually lower now? But we have to remember that we have indicated again and again across all violent crime, there were substantial, there were substantial increases during COVID that have not yet come down. So let's take a look at 2021. In 2021, in the first week of April, we see it's above the long-term average. In the second week of April, we see it is at the long-term average. In the third week of April 2021, it is below average. And in the fourth week, it is again above average, suggesting that in 2021, that long-term average is essentially what was occurring. Let's jump to 2022. Jumping into 2022, we see that the amount of violent crime in the first week of April was substantially higher, right? This is related to that increased violent crime trend we've discussed. In the second week, it was lower. In the third week, it was remarkably higher. And in the fourth week, it regressed. That puts that at higher than 2021 and 2022, but still largely consistent with that long-term average we pointed out in the beginning. So what does this actually mean? If you look at the visualization and you see the blue line, which begins the DPS deployment, you will see that that average, the red dashed line across, is remarkably lower than what we have seen over the past few years. Now, there are other important things to consider, like the seasonality. All crime in almost all jurisdictions, except those that tend to have large influx of people during the winter, like ski resorts. All jurisdictions in the U.S. show essentially the same long-term crime pattern over the year. Crime is lowest during the winter, it goes up during the spring, it peaks in the summer, and it reduces thereafter. So if you look at 2021, this is an example of an average year in Austin, right? When we look at that, you'll notice that the data points in red that signify April of 2021, crime is rising at that point in time. If we look at the 2022 data, we see essentially the same curve. We see that in April of 2022, crime is rising. This pattern holds up across the last 10 years of data. It likely holds up longer. I haven't gone that far back into our records to determine because this is the same pattern you see in all jurisdictions in the U.S. What was happening in Austin prior to the DPS deployment? Now, this is a short series, so there's more volatility in it, a little bit more squiggly. Crime was going up. So what we see essentially is the same pattern in the beginning of 2023, prior to the DPS deployment, that we see year over year in Austin. In addition to those lower levels, those four red dots after the DPS deployment, which are remarkably low compared to other Aprils, we also have to note that crime was definitively going up prior to DPS's deployment. So what happens to 2023 when we begin to try to understand the effect of DPS deployment? The green curve shows you what happened in Austin in 2023. Prior to April of 2023, you notice that the green curve is increasing, and the DPS deployment thereafter pulls the curve very much back down. That is the effect of the reduction in violent crime that has occurred based upon the DPS deployments. Now, I will add as a note, there is nothing that is particularly novel about what we see here. 30 years of randomized controlled trials have demonstrated again and again that directed patrol, placing patrol resources in the area of highest demand, reduces crime. So this pattern that we're seeing here is consistent with everything that is known about the effect of directed patrol. So we will continue to track this, we'll continue to provide updates. When we get into the work session, we'll get into a lot more detail about it. But what we see happening here is exactly what we should expect to happen, given what's known about the nature of patrol.
Excuse me, Dr. Kringan, just to clarify, can you tell us which measure of violent crime is the measure that's plotted here? I don't have anything to look at to see what that measures.
Yes, this is the same measure that we've been reporting. So what this is going to include is it's going to include the aggravated assaults, because the aggravated assaults involve a weapon. It's going to include robberies, which actually includes both categories of robbery, aggravated robbery, which is robbery with a weapon, and robbery by assault. Robbery by assault occurs when there is no demonstration of a weapon, but the nature of the crime often suggests, if you read the qualitative information about it, that a weapon is asserted or implied, right? The nature of robbery is inherently violent and coercive, so it fits the same category. In addition, the previous Part One violent index crimes are in here. This would include sexual assaults, and it would include any homicide or murder, right? So these are the counts. Now, I'll talk about that in just a second because that's something I want to address in the Public Safety Committee meeting, right? And so this gives you a general overview. We'll take it apart in more detail when we have more time. Looking at moving forward, what we plan on doing for reporting to assist in council's understanding about what is happening is moving to council district-level reporting. I think it's important, and we have agreed as a department, that your understanding of what is happening to crime in your district is exceedingly important. So we're in the process of building out the tools and processes to be able to report this in a way that might be more conducive to your individual constituents. We'll continue to look at violent crime. We'll also start to look at some victimization measures, right? We'll look at those emergency calls for assistance, we'll look at those response times. We'll look at what happens with traffic crashes, and in particular, thinking about the impact of crashes on individuals who are injured and/or fatalities, right? As we put that together, we want to be, you know, work in conjunction. We'll present a lot of information with that to the Public Safety Committee to get your feedback on the things that we can do to make that more viable. We think that that'll reduce a lot of the confusion that occurs because the police sectors that we typically measure information in do not line up with council districts, right? Beyond that, this allows us to begin to understand things like the demography of the district, the demography of the victims in the district, right? The demography of individuals who are involved in crashes and things of that nature that also help us understand what we see in the demography related to the law enforcement activities that occur within those council districts. So we're looking forward to presenting a great deal more of this in the Public Safety Committee meeting. And with that, well, questions and feedback, but I'll turn it over to you if you'd like to turn it over.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kringan. I'll turn it over now if we can get the next slide deck pulled up. And Colonel McCraw will be making a short presentation on behalf of DPS.
The chief's qualified, but short, so I'll make it brief. First of all, Mayor, thank you for having me here today with Chief Chacon. Council members, thank you for what you do. And I'd also like to thank your constituents because I can assure you, ever since our DPS troopers arrived on Day One and our special agents arrived, they've been, they've been treated so well by the community, and we appreciate that, and God bless them for that. We recognize it certainly. There are no law enforcement officers in a state like Texas that continues to grow and a city like Austin to protect everybody. And we understand the challenges, and it's been the leadership and legislature made it very clear that one of our jobs is to help our local partners succeed in protecting its citizens from harm. And, of course, to that end, we follow the lead of Chief Chacon. We're not in charge, this is his operation. But we can do something that others can't do. You can't just grow patrol agents immediately in that regard. You can't graduate enough to be able to immediately move and do these directed patrols that the good doctor talked about. Those things are important. Certainly, the evidence is there that supports, you know, proactive policing and directed patrols. And whether you call it hotspot policing or evidence-based policing, it works, and we realize that. So we go where we're told to go, and we do what we do. And from an department's standpoint, one thing we do is we patrol actively, and it's all crime all the time, and that includes traffic enforcement. And that's just how we handle things. We don't give troopers the discretion to pick which laws, traffic laws they enforce and don't enforce. Now, they do give discretion in terms of will they issue a citation or not. And, of course, in looking at the demographic and population data, which is important, and we do, to ensure, for a number of reasons, we do it, but certainly accountability, and to look at in terms of, you know, ask the question, is the Department of Public Safety engaged in implicit or explicit racial profiling? Something very near and dear to the house because, one, it's antithetical to professional policing, number one. And number two, it's against the law. So we do have some robust controls that I discussed in the letter Mayor laid out that the department has, probably more robust than some others. But we feel strongly about this and have them in place. And if you look at the numbers, and the best way that the department captures numbers is really at a county level. We don't do it in municipal districts. We do it at a state and county level. And you look, for that matter, it's Travis County. If you look at the numbers, you can see that it's consistent with the demographics of the city and the county, you know, up until we began this operation. And then all of a sudden, you see a large, you know, increase in the amount of stops of Hispanic drivers and Latino drivers. And that's not unexpected if, depending upon where you're at. If you're in South Texas, if you're in El Paso, that's not unexpected to see that increase just based upon the demographics in the area that we're operating. And in some of the areas that we've been operating in, and Austin Police Department's did a great job of providing us those statistics, where the Hispanic population is higher, you can expect that we bring in 80 troopers and 20 special agents, that the numbers are going to get increased dramatically. In fact, we're already, just this initiative alone, 11,000 stops, okay, just in 30 days. We make 16,000, 18,000 stops in a year usually. And I have that set forth in the, you can go ahead and move the slides. I guess I'm allowed to do that myself, right? We don't want a chief having to do that. But I'll just leave it at this one right here. We're talking about activities. The most important thing we talked about at the press conference is the absence of crime and disorder that defines success in our profession, number one. And we do, there are activities. We do get involved in actions and things like that, and we track those things. And you can see some of those things right there. And you'll notice in terms of in those activities, whether it's the seizure, felony arrests, misdemeanor arrests, total arrests, the seizure of fentanyl weapons, all of those things happen in the course of conducting directed patrols in the area of operation. But going back to the demographics that, in those areas that we're operating in, is that you've got in DPS North, is what we call it, APD calls it Runburg, 28% white, 69.2% Hispanic. And DPS North in Cameron, that is referred to by APD, 31.9% white, 12% black, and 61% Hispanic. And DPS South, it's 47 white, 11.7 black, and 41.5 Hispanic and 5.6 Asian. So you can see is that if you look at our stop data, it's reflective, and that's our total stop data for Travis County. And you look at it for 2021, 2022, and let's move just to 2023. I think that'll... You'll see overall, we're up to 16,000 stops, that's all of Travis County. But if you look at it from particularly, from since the operation began on March 30th, you'll notice a dramatic increase, okay, of 11,000. And you'll also notice that that's where we saw the increase of 38% in the previous year in terms of demographics of Latino stops, all the way up to 54%. But again, that's reflected in the area that we operate. And we operate in the area that APD wants us to operate in that regard. And I think that without question, they're using, you know, an evidence-based approach in terms of a high crime and high calls to be able to focus in on those areas, and that's what we're doing. And another area, and one thing, the only thing that I think the doctor left out is that, yeah, we can use this, this directed patrols works in reducing violent crime. It also can be used to- It also can be used to decrease violent, or crashes as well, and fatality crashes, and departments use this across the state as well. That concludes my presentation. I would like to, if there's any questions about account, one thing we do that we're very big on is that we do have in-car cameras, we do have body worn cameras, very strict protocols. We actually go back and capture the pre-event activity, meaning the probable cause before the stop. So we've got both of those. If there's any questions in terms of a DPS conduct, including rudeness, we expect it to be courteous and professional at all times, please let us know. We have an inspector general reports to the Public Safety Commission, and we investigate and take all of those allegations very seriously. And of course, we have the evidence to be able to go through each and every stop that DPS makes to be able to determine whether there's unprofessional conduct at any given time. So with that, another thing, I would, anytime a council member would like to ride along with one of our troopers, you're more than welcome to do it, and there's no, we're entirely transparent, and I think you'll be pleasantly pleased with the professional men and women we have in the department. And by the way, APD is a great organization, and they've got great leadership, but those men and women, I can tell you, every day, we work with them, and they've got outstanding professionals in the city of Austin. I'm very proud to be a citizen of Austin with the men and women that are assigned to the Austin Police Department. With that, I conclude my statements.
I just wanted to add one thing really quickly at the end here, Mayor, and then hand it over to you. Thank you to the Colonel for the presentation. One of the things that he went by very quickly, but I think is worth noting, is a number of, on the slide that he provided, it has APD assists. Those are the number of times that they, that a DPS trooper has come to the aid essentially of one of our APD officers at a call, at a traffic stop, maybe showing up first to a call, holding the scene until APD could arrive. You see that over the four-week period, that's happened over 1,000 times. And so it isn't just about traffic stops. It isn't, you know, this is, these are essentially helping APD to complete its public safety mission. And the last thing I'll say is that, you know, DPS, much like APD, can, you know, it pulling some of the data sometimes can be challenging. And I know that I have received questions regarding arrests, specifically arrest data that DPS is making. DPS is, has been working diligently to provide that information, but in order to hopefully provide it even a little bit faster, we've made formal requests to the district attorney, to the county attorney, and then with regard to citations to the justice of the peace, so that we can get that information as quickly as possible, and then break it down and report it out to council. That concludes my remarks. Thank you, Mayor.
I would like to add one thing, is that it's important that we look at all the data as well, and not just arrests, but citations, but also warnings in that regard. So traffic, that's why we're using that data set. It's all the contacts that the department's had. So sometimes, we don't charge anybody with an offense, but we do stop them in that regard and issue a warning. I know there was one complaint that I'm aware of, since we've been here, and I don't have any complaints on troopers since you've been here, since we've been here?
No, not to my knowledge.
Well, one is because someone got a warning for a citation, or warning for not having a front license plate on their Tesla. They think that's wrong. Well, that, you know, it may not be, you know, they may not like it, but then they need to talk to the state legislature. We're not policymakers. That's the state law, and we're going to enforce state laws when we're in the area of operation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you all, and then I'm going to open it up for questions, but I want to start with where I started in these comments and discussions that we've had, and that is that there's no question that some believe or feel like that the efforts in certain areas, and we, I think everybody understands why those areas are chosen, and they're chosen based upon what I'll call distress calls, people calling and saying, "We need police to be here," and 911 calls and that sort of thing. And I think everybody probably understands that one of the ways you approach that is by having a presence, and that presence being felt. And I think everybody probably understands that there may be an arrest, and in fact, you probably haven't had a chance to read the Colonel's letter, but one of the examples, he has a couple of examples of where a stop, like a license, a front license plate not being there, results in some arrest of a major, of major crime. All that being said, there's also the negative feeling that with that sort of activity, parts of our population are being targeted. And in order for this to achieve the goals that we want it to achieve, I think everybody also understands, we don't want people to feel like they are a target or there is racial profiling going on. That ought to be able to lead to the ability to recalibrate, to recognize that that is also a very important issue and one that needs to be addressed, and deployment in different ways as we go forward. The data that will be created from that is the data that we can look at again as we progress, but the ongoing operation, if there's to be an ongoing operation, ought to be one that we can address concerns, as I highlighted in my opening comments, and hopefully I did with this question. Am I wrong about that?
Well, Mayor, you know, you're the mayor. Bottom line is, is that we're going to patrol where Chief Chacon wants us to patrol, and not just where, but when. And that's been based upon data, and we'll continue to do so. If there's a switch in it, based on policy reasons along those lines, we're here to support him, not to support anybody else but him, to help him be successful, and that's, we'll continue to do so.
Well, that's the answer you've given me before, and I just wanted to make sure everybody got to hear that. So Chief, I'll put it to you, as you move forward with this, hearing those kinds of concerns, how do you, how do you proceed?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So the Colonel and I, as well as other members of DPS leadership, have been basically over the last week, talking about the information that was provided by the county attorney's office. To be clear, at the same time that you were notified of those numbers, I was notified of those numbers, and what they, you know, certainly what they appear, and what is, you know, beyond appearance, what do those numbers actually mean? The DPS has indicated a willingness to go ahead and shift our strategy, and I very much plan to do that, so that we are not having a disparate impact on our communities of color. I've indicated that to several of the council members, especially those whose council districts have been, have been affected by this, and I plan to stand by that. And, you know, without, it's important to recognize that those, those areas are where we have our 911 calls for emergency service coming in. I mean, we can't lose sight of that. And we have seen drops in violent crime. But what is, you know, what are the other things that are kind of coming along with that? And those are the concerns, and where we will be shifting strategies, as well as an expanded, and I highlighted this a little bit, an expanded, basically, number of troopers throughout the city, in different areas, on different roadways, that we'll be looking specifically at traffic safety.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Councilmember Ralston Alter. Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'm sorry, Mayor Watson, I was, I saw there's no option for me to put my hand up, but I...
Yeah, please, please feel free, and then I'll call on Councilmember Ralston Alter. Sorry, Councilmember Cadre.
Oh, great.
Can you, can you turn your camera on? That, maybe I'd have seen that if you...
Yeah, I am, unfortunately, I can't get my camera on just yet, but I just have a real quick question.
No problem at all, fair enough. Go ahead.
Yeah, but I want to thank APD and DPS for being here today, and, you know, I want to thank APD for being, at the last work session where Chief Chacon answered a lot of questions, and, you know, a lot of questions that you weren't able to get to us, you know, you took the notes and you said you'd get back to us. But one question that I want to ask, you know, both APD and DPS, and maybe you guys have an answer, you know, since our last meeting, is, you know, what is the realistic future of this partnership? And then my other follow-up question to that would be, what is the timeline? You know, what does success look like? What does, you know, what is, what is a win?
Well, I'll go ahead and start on that, councilmember. You know, I think that the metrics right now certainly are being built out. The goal of the program is to decrease the number of serious injury collisions and fatalities and to reduce violent crime. That is, that is the goal. What that looks like, where we say that, you know, we've accomplished that, and how long this program will go on, it has not been determined. And as we're gathering the data, I think that it will give us a better indication of where we need to set, set the mark, and once we achieve it, then have a discussion about either winding it down, or obviously, I defer quite a bit to the city manager and the mayor on, on their feelings about the program as well.
Councilmember Cadre and councilmembers, I'll give a reaction to that. As I indicated in my opening comments, this ought to be a bridge, a common sense bridge to when we can get our police staffing at levels we feel like it needs to be. There are a couple of factors in that that we ought to be paying close attention to and be aggressive about. One is, today, I think it's the last day for early voting, and Saturday is Election Day on propositions. Those propositions will be voted on, and the people will have had an opportunity to vote completely on Saturday. And my hope would be, and I think we all hope, that shortly thereafter, if not immediately thereafter, the city and the police union are in a position to get us to a table where we can reach a contract, which I think, again, everybody here believes will make a difference in our ability to recruit and retain police officers. In addition to that, conversations with the manager, we need to move with dispatch and really focus with the chief and others on how we can improve our recruiting process. And we, as a council, have already acted in that regard, but it's time to really figure out if we're doing all we can do, all we should do, and all we want to do to do a better job of recruiting, which would then put us in a position, of course, and put us in a position, of course, to have more police officers, and thus reduce the need for a bridge like what we're talking about. So I guess the final part of that answer, councilmember, and to the other councilmembers and the public, is that this council has been moving, I think, pretty aggressively in trying to address the issues of policing and, and public safety. And I think it's, this bridge allows us to continue to move with that aggressiveness to get to the proper result and as fast as we can. Councilmember Fuentes.
Councilmember Alter, do you want to go first?
I'm sorry. I did call on Councilmember Alter, if you don't mind. Councilmember...
Councilmember Fuentes, you can go first. If you like.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel McCraw, for being here with us today. I appreciate the letter that you provided that has data for us to take a look at, and really, that's kind of what brought together this briefing. Thank you, Councilmember Velazquez, for calling for this briefing at this time, because the lack of data and transparency around this agreement has caused a lot of confusion and concerns from the communities that we represent, and so having this dialogue is important. So I appreciate you being here. Part of what I am still having a hard time understanding is knowing that, you know, how the trooper patrols are, you know, addressing public safety in a way that is effective to the needs that we have as a city and aligned with our values as a city. The data you shared today says and indicates that there were over 12,000 stops from the DPS troopers within this operation in the last month compared to last year with the DPS troopers in Travis County. There were 18,000 stops for the whole year. So in just one month, we've had more stops. We're on trend, if you add up the rest of the months for this year, to have substantially significant more amount of stops in our county than we did last year. And of those 12,000 stops, 6% of them resulted in arrests. And, you know, so to me, what that means, knowing that only 6% resulted in arrests, it means that 11,000 Austinites were pulled over and stopped, were given a warning, or, you know, not sure what else happened. But how is that ensuring the safety of our communities, especially since we know that the patrolling has been in our communities of color?
Well, like I said before, we don't decide what laws we enforce. We enforce all state laws, and all state traffic laws. And where we patrol, that's how we operate. And so if you send us into an area, we're going to conduct directed patrols, that's exactly what you're going to see. We're going to see stops, may not be a citation, may be a warning in that regard, but very simple. And some of that is just about educating the public. They don't even know it's a violation of law in terms of some of the things they've done. So, you know, community-based policing for us is one person at a time, treating everybody with dignity and respect, everybody in a courteous manner, and being accountable for those actions in a way that we can bring back the data through body worn cameras and dash cameras in that regard. And even if we're rude in the minus way, that person will be addressed in that regard. So I don't look at it as a negative thing when we go into a community. In fact, the community is much safer when we go into it, because some of these violations certainly are moving violations, have an impact on crime. But in the end, you know, when we go into someplace, it's safer than it was before, plain and simple. And we're really unapologetic about where we go, as long as we adhere to our values and ensure that everybody's accountable, and we act in the appropriate manner. But acting in an appropriate manner is not picking and choosing which traffic laws. A police officer decides what he or she wants to enforce. We enforce all state laws very simply, and that's just, we continue to operate that way, and wherever we go, we're going to continue to operate that way.
Well, and I want to, you know, and I should probably take a step back and acknowledge the mayor's opening remarks, where he talked about the recalibration of where our troopers are patrolling. And something very important was established in your remarks that, where you share, that you are working with our chief to determine, or you're putting your troopers based on where our police chief is asking you to put the troopers. Is that right?
That's correct. And, you know, and based upon, you know, and we got a chance to look at the data, and I don't disagree, that the high crime and high call areas that we're being deployed to are the highest in the city.
Well, I think what's important for me, you know, we were, and it has been shared with us several times, that the goals of this operation is to reduce traffic fatalities and traffic injuries, to reduce violent crime, and to reduce response times. But, you know, yet again, just to get back to my earlier point, when we know that over 90% of the stops that the troopers are making are not resulting in arrests for violent crime, I'm having a hard time making that connection of how this is really reducing the violent crime in our area and helping improve public safety, other than the perception that if we see a more visible presence, that more Austinites would feel safe, right? So, but I guess to move this conversation along, because I do think that there is a way where we, this operation can be effective in addressing those stated goals of reducing traffic fatalities, of helping us reduce and prevent violent crime, but I think this question more is for the chief and what I was hoping to learn today, and what I'm hoping to establish, because for me, as a policymaker of Southeast Austin, I would like to have the troopers, you know, redeployed or reassigned to those high-speed roadways. So our I-35, MOPAC, that is something that, that can be done?
Yeah, I can assure you, first of all, my neighbors would appreciate it. They'd like to see more troopers in our area of operation. We're focusing based on the crime, and the call data is where we're at right now, based on what the chief directed us to. But let me go back to, you know, the stop data in that regard. I mean, this very stop data that, you know, that sounds meaningless, but, you know, we've, for example, we identified an individual as sexually assaulting a 14-year-old girl and arrested him for sexual assault and rape of a young girl that was being trafficked, essentially trafficked. You know, methamphetamine, cocaine, heroin, fentanyl, pills and otherwise have been taken off the street, weapons, okay, a substantial amount of weapons, and individuals that shouldn't be carrying weapons because they were convicted felons. So when we're doing some traffic, and people are seeing this, to your point, it's prevention. People are seeing that, yeah, there's enforcement here, and oh, by the way, there's a residual impact in terms of violent crime and all crime when you do that, and crash data as well. So we're unapologetic about enforcing all state laws. We don't get to pick and choose, and you can't tell which individual that may be engaging in a felony. What does a felon look like? Well, a felon looks like a United States citizen. You don't know. But what we can do... But what we can do, we got to have a reason to stop. And the reason to stop is probable cause, and a violation of the traffic code is probable cause. And we're strict adherents to the U.S. Constitution, the Fourth Amendment, and search and seizure, and we follow a very strict protocol. And the advantage is, if people want to accuse us of racial profiling or being indiscriminate in terms of how we're enforcing traffic laws, we have body cameras, and we have dash cameras in HD quality that we maintain. And if there's any allegations, we keep it indefinitely. So if only just have statistical data, you actually have the evidence. You can go back and look at each stop and determine whether any infractions or anything was done incorrectly, including probable cause. That's the advantage we have, and certainly prosecuting attorneys, they have the say in terms of whether they even want to prosecute the case. We recognize, they all evaluate that as well. Whether there's any wrongdoing, you know, first of all, if it's criminal in any way, shape, or form, we investigated, Texas Rangers investigated. And internal investigations are conducted by an inspector general, reports to Public Safety Commission, and directly to that commission. So we take it seriously about how we go in to protect the community, and we, everybody has a right to be safe in the state. It ought not to be driven by money or where one lives.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for that. And we know that all races engage in drug use. And so I think that what is happening, though, with this operation is that we're seeing a, again, the patrolling seems to be, you know, overpolicing our east side communities, but you're saying that, hey, you can go to the west side of Austin, it's just more at the discretion of our police chief to make that call.
Sure. It's not overpolicing, it's really overprotecting, is what we're doing.
Chief, would you answer, Councilmember Fuentes?
Certainly. And that, Councilmember, is exactly what, you know, I've been talking with DPS leadership, including Colonel McCraw, about, you know, a, seeing a bigger presence in other parts of the city, seeing them in all parts of the city. And they have been deployed, at one point or another, to every sector in the city now. I think where we are seeing, what we've been talking about certainly, is in smaller segments, including your council district. So that's why I'm trying to balance this with, we, you know, we can't ignore the calls for service that are coming in there and reducing the violent crime, but at the same time, increasing the traffic enforcement and these things in other parts of the city, which will draw down on those resources and, you know, create the balance that we're looking for.
You know, one thing that when we met with Justice Chu about the citation data, something that was pretty striking was learning that of the citations that were given, very few were for moving violations. And if we know that one of the objectives of this operation is to reduce traffic injuries and fatalities, Colonel, my question for you, I know you mentioned, and you shared both in your letter and in your remarks, that our troopers will enforce state law. However, troopers do have the discretion on whether or not to write a warning. Would you like to speak to that, knowing that, you know, the majority of the citations that we're seeing come in through our courts are for predominantly minor infractions, driving without a driver's license, driving with an expired tag? You know, I'm more focused on, you know, running a red light, reckless driving, DWI, than whether or not someone has an updated tag.
Well, DWI is a Class A misdemeanor, the others are Class C, so they're all really minor, if you want to say, traffic violations, but they're all the law, and we're obliged to enforce all state law, including all traffic code violations, plain and simple. Doesn't mean they get a citation many times, and most often, over 50% of the time, they're going to get, they get a warning in that regard. So there's many people, we did come in contact in your community that got warnings, and that's how we continue to operate. We strict adherence to the rule of law, and we enforce the laws when we go into an area.
But I guess, can you speak to why the citation data shows that predominantly the citations that are being given are not for moving violations, they're for...
Any violation. Like I said before, if it's a traffic code violation, whether it's an overweight truck, okay, or if it's defective tires, defective taillight, and we, one case, we made an arrest when an individual had a defective front light on that, in that vehicle. It's not a moving violation. It's certainly an equipment violation, yet it's a violation of law, and it could have implications on safety.
But at the end of the day, can there be, the discretion is to the trooper on whether or not to issue a citation?
That's correct. In most instances. There are some things they're not going to be allowed to. Insurance and no driver's license, one thing, they have to issue a citation. Same thing with, you know, registration, and certainly DWI, or is one of the things, or driving while license suspended. They don't have any discretion in those areas.
Okay, I think that's important to point out.
Speeding, stop sign violations, failed to drive in single lane, unsafe speed, all of those things, they have the discretion based upon the totality of circumstances at the time.
But driving with...
Councilmember, just to follow up on what the Colonel just said, we've asked the JP to provide us additional data. We don't have it yet. We just sent the note out to him yesterday to really break it down for us, so we could really understand the nature of those citations. I don't know that he had warning data in there, and we want to tie that back to warning data, because I think that'll be indicative of the percentage of people that are just getting a warning ticket for some of these things that, where there is discretion. And finally, as the chief has mentioned, and the Colonel has mentioned, the recalibration is going to move these patrols into different areas of our city, use the same standard that they've been using at where they've been patrolling, and so it's focusing on traffic enforcement. But when you do traffic enforcement, you may find that you pull over someone who does need to be arrested, and that's what they're going to be doing.
Well said. In fact, I mean, that's, we operate the same way, you know, whether we're in the Panhandle or where we're in Austin, Texas, or South Texas, or Del Rio, we operate the same way.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to my colleagues. I know many, many of my colleagues also have questions, but I just wanted to reiterate that I think that, you know, transparency, communication is going to be key moving forward. Part of your memo, city manager, indicated that the next time we'll have an opportunity to discuss this as a body will be at the May 22 public safety. Yes. And again, you know, I really want us to get, at some point, I hope, part of our conversation today, we're able to shed some light on kind of the metrics and the strategies and how we meet the goals that have been outlined as part of this operation. You know, we know that we are in a staffing crisis. We know that these troopers can help alleviate, you know, some of our overworked police officers. But I want to make sure that we really are working with our troopers to have them doing actual strategies that address our objectives. So, for example, you know, a specialized unit for narcotics, the fentanyl, that crisis is certainly escalating, and I think that having additional support in that effort would be welcomed. And then, of course, addressing actual moving violations, speeding, running red lights. There are areas where I think that this operation could really make a difference and be effective, but it simply cannot be at the expense of our, again, our east side communities, where we're seeing a disproportionate amount of ticketing happen.
Thank you, Councilmember.
We understand.
Councilmember, far calling you, one of the things that I've, and this is just me throwing out an idea. Originally, when we put May, we had the May 22, that's a special called meeting, and we did that because we wanted something set for reporting on this partnership. At the request of Councilmember Velazquez, we went ahead and had the last work session, and now we're having this work session. So there's a May 16 work session, and then there's the May 22 committee meeting. This is working, I think, pretty well for us to get information on these kinds of things. Give some thought to whether or not what we do is, we go forward just doing this at various work sessions, so that we don't wait too long, and we can get more data in. I'm not going to, I'll put that up on the message board at some point for everybody to thought about. Councilmember Allison Alter, and then I'll come to the Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, and thank you, Colonel McCraw, for being here, and Chief, and Dr. Krangin. I think three of my colleagues have now indicated that they want to recalibrate to have focus on the need to define the strategy, and I agree with that direction. I think that as a council, we agree with the broad principles of reducing response times, preventing violent crime, and improving traffic safety. I think we have some different definitions of what that means, and some things that that means differently in our community. And maybe that's not defined well enough, and we need to be digging a little bit deeper with that. With respect to the measuring it, I think we're still very far from understanding how we would know when we were succeeding. And there's some basic data that we don't have yet, and I want to ask some questions about that, and I want to underscore the fact that we need to have that transparency for our community, for us as policymakers. But we also have to have that transparency if we want to build a sustainable, strategic way forward that addresses the shared goals that we all have. And absent that data, and absent figuring out how we measure it through the course of the last several weeks, I can't tell you how many times I've been told, well, we don't have the data, DPS has the data, or, you know, the county has to give us the data, or whatever. Something's not working in the data for us to get that full picture, and we're going to have to be creative and think about how we do that. On the most basic level, today is the first time that I've heard anything about the number of troopers that are in our city. You mentioned 80 troopers and 21 special.
Twenty.
How many are there?
Twenty special agents, so it's 100 that comes in each week. They work 12 hours a day in straight shifts, so it increases the capacity that we put here in Austin.
Okay, so on any given day, what does that translate to? Is it...
100 officers working 12 hours a day.
Okay, and are they working all day? Are they only working from 3:00 to 3:00, or...
The times are based upon the crime. And right now, and I don't really like to get into the exact times that we're operating, because they're monitoring, and they recognize when we're coming on duty, when we're not. So I'd prefer to keep that more vague.
So the troops are coming in, and they're working...
12 hours.
Each one of the 100 is working 12 hours every single day for seven days when they are coming in?
That's correct.
And so they're rotating through?
From other parts of the state, rotating through.
Okay, so it's from one week to the next, it is not the same...
That's correct.
...set of troopers? Okay. You provided us with data, and Councilmember Fuentes raised a question about only 6% of those being, of those traffic stops, leading to arrest. If you actually look for the felony arrests, it's closer to 4% on that. So what portion, I mean, first of all, I'll just say that that seems like a really small portion for all of those stops, and there's a whole lot of other people who are getting caught in that process, who are not dealing, we're not dealing with violent crime, and we're not necessarily addressing the traffic safety concerns that we have. So can you tell me what portion of the stops were based on moving violations?
Let me tell you this, is that, as I mentioned earlier before, really what defines success is the absence of crime, period. That's what we care about, okay? It's not in terms of percentage, which ones are moving violations, which ones are stationary violations, equipment violations. At the end of the day, we conduct patrols, and we know that directed patrols reduces crime, and everybody all live in a safe community, and we continue to do that wherever we're deployed in that regard. And if there's disproportionate activity happening in that area of operation, I can see the chief moving to some different locations, and that's spreading it out, and that's his call, plain and simple. But at the end of the day, is that what we can do is hold ourselves accountable to doing very professional patrols. What we won't do is pick and choose which laws we enforce. We enforce all state laws, and do it equitably, and be held accountable for it at any given time. And success, I think the chief's laid it out very well, is decrease crime, decrease call time, and decrease crashes. And he's going to use different strategies, use hotspot policing to decrease crashes, then so be it.
Can you tell me what portion of the stops were based on moving violations? And there's a reason that I'm asking, because in our community, we have a goal of Vision Zero, but we know that we are not going to get to zero as long as we have speeding, we have folks running red lights, et cetera. That has been a priority for us. And when this was presented to us, we were told it was about traffic safety, and we were going to help stop speeding. And for a lot of people in our community, they care deeply about us addressing that. Lots of what Vision Zero says is that we have these fatalities on state roads that are not being patrolled. What I don't understand from the data we've been given is what patrolling to date has been done on these major highways, on these major arterials, where our Vision Zero data says we've had the fatalities, where we've had the speeding. That is part of what we want to do. And if we do that, which is a goal that the community all shares, we will reduce some of the other parts that we're concerned about.
I don't disagree that we've been overly focused on violent crime. I don't disagree with that. And again, like I said before, if the chief wants us to deploy different locations, to work different areas, to address different problems in the city, we'll do so, plain and simple. I'll be glad to get you the percentages of breakdowns of stationary violations versus moving violations, very easy to do.
I think I would really appreciate that level of data. That's what we need. And we also need location and demographic, and we need the demographic information of, for arrests. And, you know, we're not asking these questions, you know, just because we want some data. We're asking these questions because people in our community are perceiving a particular experience throughout this deployment. And if we want to address those concerns, we want to recalibrate, we want to make sure that we are attaining the success that we agree we want, we have to be able to measure it, and we have to be able to communicate it to our community. When we go and we talk to our JP, and our JP basically says, I've got a stack of tickets, and out of however many tickets, there's two that have a moving violation, and all the rest say, you know, you don't have a license, you don't have a vehicle registration, and they don't even list a warning for the moving violation, then for a chunk of the community that cares about the traffic enforcement piece, that need is not not being addressed. And we need, we need the data.
We're going to continue to enforce all traffic laws, so get ready. I mean, that's the way it's going to be, wherever we go.
But where you go...
Wherever we go, we're going to do the same thing.
Where you go depends, is going to dictate which kind of traffic violations you're...
That's fine, that's fine. But rest assured, we will do it equitably where we go. But where we go, we're going to enforce all traffic laws, plain and simple.
Okay, so Chief, I'll just express for me, I would like to see more of the troopers on our major highways. I want to see them exactly where our Vision Zero says we have the fatalities and speeding. I want to see them on 2222 and 360, where we have again and again expressed that we have the motorcycle racers, we've had fatalities over there. We need to get the troopers to be helping with public safety throughout the city.
Councilmember, just so you know, when the chief made his presentation just a few minutes ago, he mentioned some of those very roadways you just mentioned, that he's, that we were going to, we were going to have the focus of that. We have to all agree that directed patrol does have an impact on crime. I mean, we have to come to some agreement that just by, just the presence alone has an impact on crime. I think we're in the process, as Jonathan mentioned just a few minutes ago, we've got data by district. It's not refined yet. We're not sure that we've got completely that done, but you're going to get the demographics of the district, the types of crash data by district, the demographics of people involving in those crashes, the fatalities, the injuries. You're going to get the victim data, so we know what the demographics of the victims are by district. So we want to be able to begin to share that with council to paint a broader picture of all the different components of public safety. And finally, JP Chu gave us that memo a week ago last Friday. We said at the Thursday meeting that we needed to get together because we needed additional data, additional information about what the meaning of all that was. We sent him a note yesterday, Mr. Lucio, the deputy to county attorney, Dalia Garza, sent me a note yesterday, he wants to start getting together so we can start sharing data to get to the granular level of what you're asking for. We just had that memo yesterday, so we're in the process of setting that timeframe so that can get done to answer not just your questions, but the community questions as well.
So I wanted to ask Dr. Krangin whether that data was going to include the DPS data, because whenever I've asked for data from DPS, and relative to this, I've been told we don't have that data. And so, you know, we're trying to understand the added value that DPS is bringing to our community, and so the data has to include DPS. And I'm not sure why the only way we can get that data is going to the county rather than directly from DPS who has that data. And again, you know, we agree, it sounds like on the broad contours of what would define success, and I think it's very important that we figure out how we're going to measure that success, so that our chief has very clear direction from us as to how we, how we want that focus to be. What portion of the felony arrests came from traffic stops?
Almost all of them did.
Okay.
Either directed or otherwise.
Okay, and...
So that chart that you see with the fentanyl, along those lines, that's the closest one, you know, whether it's the pills, or the methamphetamine, or the cocaine, it's all directed traffic stops or part of enforcement operations. And sometimes, they're integrated with what our special agents are doing as well.
With respect to the violent crime beyond traffic stops, do we have... With respect to the violent crime beyond traffic stops, do we have any proactive, you know, strategies for addressing the violent crime?
Yes.
Okay, can you, are you able to share some of those strategies?
We've already talked about the directed patrols in the areas where there's high crime, that's one strategy, another strategy is integrating our special agents to be able to conduct covert surveillances to identify and detect criminal activity, to then follow up with directed traffic stops if necessary, probable cause leading to additional subjects in that regard, and identifying networks that are operating in these communities that are engaged in, we'll call it, whether it's drug trafficking or other types of crimes.
So I think we would also say we would like more of that.
And I can add to that a little bit, Councilmember, in that the DPS special agents are working directly, for instance, with our organized crime division on longer-term narcotics investigations, gang investigations, so this involves both, you know, narcotics trafficking as well as crimes of violence, to deter, detect, stop it from happening, or to make arrests after it's happened if that's the case. So kind of working on both ends, they have a smaller contingent of DPS special agents, but that is part of the strategy as well.
Chief Chacon, do you think that you are in a position to direct where DPS is going with its patrols and what it is doing?
I think the Colonel was very clear that, you know, I will be able to provide that information, and he will, he will do as we're asking him to do.
Thank you, and Director McCrae, I appreciate that, and I hope that that will be how we proceed. I have understood really that we were handing you data on where the calls were, and that that was how you were choosing where to deploy, and so I would really like it to be the more strategic approach, would very much like that traffic enforcement to be spread more broadly, have more of the support for our investigative units, which have been depleted with the staffing shortages, and to see if there are ways to do the proactive violent crime enforcement without folks feeling like there's a checkpoint set up in their community, which is not.
Yeah, we won't set up any driver's license checkpoints, I can assure you of that. Certainly we're allowed to do it, there's a way to do it constitutionally, but we're not going to use that tactic or technique in the neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you, I may have more, I appreciate that, I may have more questions, but I'll leave it to you.
I'd just like one more point that the chief may not have mentioned, but when, when our response times improve, and they have improved to these emergency calls, that leads, that leads to better, not just better public service, but we prevent crime when we do that. And so we really do, I mean, we're thankful that they've been able to bring in the number of officers they've had, so that we can improve our response times, and I think in the end, that's why you're seeing some of the results in the data in terms of reducing that violent crime, and eventually, as we focus on those traffic things you mentioned, Councilmember, we'll begin to see some evidence there as well.
I did have one question that I asked last time that I would like to, to ask as well. We have had a history of some challenges when we've had protests. As this session comes to an end, as certain decisions get made, we may see more protests. What are the protocols that you are following with respect to protests? I know you have that, I know you cover the Capitol all the time, but I, but I think we need to understand those pieces as well.
We have field force operation teams throughout the state. Anytime there's civil disturbance in that regard, even proactively, we'll deploy them. We certainly worked with APD before, along those lines, and in the summer protests, we certainly went through the entire summer of deploying troopers around the state to be able to, to ensure for that order is maintained, and we continue to do it. We did here inside the city of limits to help, at the time it was Chief McManus, correct, at that time, to support them as well, to protect, you know, property and people, we'll continue to do that. We're very proactive, we trained it, we trained it, we equipped them to do it. We, we, we have not, we didn't have one complaint on a DPS officer throughout the summer of 2020, and we attribute it to being able to have sufficient resources at the right place at the right time, and I credit the management in that regard, and of course, the discipline that comes with in terms of establishing and operating a field force operation team.
Thank you, I appreciate you being here, and appreciate your willingness to work with us to recalibrate so that our community can both feel and be safe. We appreciate the work of DPS, and we look forward to shaping this to be the best possible and most successful program that it can be as long as we are deploying it.
One thing I will add is that the best data, instead of backwards into it, because some of our cases end up in the federal system, and we work with Jaime Asparza, the former district attorney in El Paso, he's the US Attorney now. So the fentanyl case, you won't show up in the district attorney's caseload, and it won't show up in the county attorney caseload because it's a felony, and the stolen weapons, and of course, the federal violations that relates to ATF, because some of them are fully automatic and weapons and suppressors. So those things will show up in the docket, if you will, in the US Attorney, and then we have some cases that are handled by the county attorney, they're misdemeanors, and same thing, district attorney, and some things that aren't handled by a JP because they're warnings. So we're the ones that have, we're the experts on DPS data, and we'll work with the chief to be able to get the data. What's a little difficult for us is to break out demographics all the time, simply because we work on probable cause and stuff, and that's the last thing we think of in terms of doing operations, is that ethnicity and race, we just, we just do our operations and collect the data. But we do have a system in place that ensures that even if there's outliers, okay, on our traffic stops, we're able to detect that and take actions in that regard. And, and so it may be a little bit difficult to break out all arrests along those lines, well, I don't know, we'll have to go back and look at and see if we can develop some scripts and algorithms that can be able to print certain reports that will help and satisfy the city council, and certainly help the chief of police do his job.
We appreciate your commitment to getting us the data and your willingness to be transparent. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly, then the mayor pro tem, and then Councilmember Cool.
Thank you, I want to thank Chief Chacon, I want to thank Director McCrae for being here, I want to thank the governor, the lieutenant governor, the mayor, and the interim city manager for setting this up and being open and transparent about how everything is going. Director McCrae, I'd like to arrange a ride out with one of your troopers, so my office will reach out to you to be able to do that. I've had interactions with them while they have been here assisting us, and they have been nothing but professional, and I know that my constituents are thankful for them being here. I also had the opportunity to speak directly to the governor and lieutenant governor about this partnership over the weekend at the Texas Peace Officer Memorial, and again, express my thanks. Mayor, earlier you brought up about the Public Safety Committee meeting and us possibly bringing this there. I personally would like to see that. We have members of the community who are here at this work session, and work sessions do not allow for us to really be able to have that public input, so that would allow for the community members to specifically speak, and I think that's important, because one of the things that I've distilled from these conversations that we've had with, with our colleagues amongst ourselves, is that some of us are getting information from their constituencies that I'm not getting, and I'm getting information from my constituents that they're not getting, and I think that would be a great, not that I have to convince you, but I think that would be a great opportunity for the community to come and speak to us directly about what's going on.
Yeah, I was thinking more about timing, but that's, that is a very good point, so that, that is a reason to keep it where it is.
Thank you, and that's not to say that we couldn't continue having these briefings of work session.
Sure, sure, but that's a reason to keep that meeting where it is.
Thank you. Chief Chacon, I know that you had mentioned to me after we had met at the last briefing about speaking to Williamson County, but I'd like my, my community to know how those discussions went, so could you maybe talk about that with Sheriff Gleason a little more?
Yeah, certainly, I talked to Sheriff Gleason, kind of at your, at your request, and gave him a call, and, you know, he, we talked about the information that he provided to you. What was interesting to me was that they're in an even more dire staffing situation than APD is. He's at about 25% vacancy rate on the sworn side, and many, you know, obviously, most of those are his deputies that are on the road, and so, you know, we, we kind of, in some sense, commiserated about our, how hard it is to keep up with the number of calls that are coming in, whether it's his, his folks or my folks, and sharing the jurisdiction. You know, if, if he's available, he's running to it, if we're available, we're running to it, but either way, we've got a, you know, we, I have a very good relationship with Sheriff Gleason, and I appreciate his partnership, and we're going to, he's going to support us, we're going to support him.
Thank you, and I, I think it's really important to, to remember that crime is a complex social issue, and that's influenced by a number of factors, like poverty, education, social inequity, and access to resources. When I heard initially that there are certain groups of people, or races, or ethnicities that were given the impression that they were targeted, that really hurt my heart, because I think that associating race alone with criminal behavior is not only inaccurate, but perpetuates harmful stereotypes and discrimination. And so it's important that we are given this information so that we can understand it better, and then also know that that is not what's going on, and kind of solidify in the community that this is not what that is about. But I really, I like page four of this memo from Director McCrae, and when I was doing research related to crimes, I, I learned that according to the National Institute of Justice, traffic stops can often lead to the discovery of more serious crimes, and that police officers are trained to look for signs of criminal activity during traffic stops, such as illegal drugs or weapons. And you have several examples of that on page four, and I think that that's very important for us to all know and recognize, that oftentimes lower traffic violations do lead to higher crimes. Can you speak to that a little bit more, Police Director?
Yeah, I'll use an example, that troopers just in the last couple of years have seized over 368 million lethal doses of fentanyl, over 50,000 pounds of methamphetamine have been taken off the street. And that's, you know, basically, it started with a traffic violation, okay, before, before they were interdicted in that regard. I can tell you, this is an example, we've spent many years trying to train troopers and other patrol officers in terms of the introduction protection of children, recognizing that sex trafficking is happening on our roadways, what are the indicators that we can see when we stop someone that might be able to put us in a position to rescue a child from a life of hell? And of course, that's been a program that we're very proud of, and it's, unfortunately, we've identified several, even in this case, in this operation alone, just one month of operation, we've identified one 14-year-old girl as being sexually assaulted in traffic. So that's the, you know, one of the things that you can't just look at it from, you know, one standpoint, you've got to look at it all of it. And, and our troopers are trained very well in terms of detecting those things, but it starts with in terms of enforcing all laws equitably, you know, on the highways, on the roadways, or wherever we're at, you know, stationary violations or moving violations, and that's how we operate.
Thank you, and Chief Chacon, we've been talking a lot about the vacancy level that we have at APD right now, and I've spoken with officers who don't really see much of a light at the end of the tunnel related to those vacancies. Do you have any kind of estimate of how long it may take to fill the majority of the vacancies we have, based on the schedule that we currently have for cadet academies?
I'll be just very, you know, kind of brutally honest about this, it's going to take us years, it's going to take us years to refill our ranks. We've aggressively increased the number of academies that we're, that we're running now, sometimes running, generally at least running three to four, sometimes running as many as five per year, per calendar year, and the, the thing that is limiting for us is the number of applicants that we're getting. This is not just an Austin phenomenon, it's something we're seeing across the country, I know DPS even is struggling to fill their ranks as well. We are all, you know, as law enforcement agencies, kind of vying for that same smaller pool of applicants and trying to make it attractive to, to come to Austin. I think, I do think Austin is an extremely attractive place to, to work, to live, to raise a family. We'll keep, you know, our recruiting efforts up, but with the number of applicants that I'm, that I'm, that I'm getting today, I don't have, I don't have that end date when we're going to refill our vacancies anywhere in sight right now.
Thank you very much for that information, yes, sir.
I'm a spoke, I said 368,000, 368 million lethal doses is what troopers have seized.
Thank you.
So I apologize for that, and I, we do have an agreement with the chief of police that we are not to recruit any of his officers while we're deployed here. That's just a gentleman's agreement.
That's, that's really funny, because I, part of my thought with the modified cadet academies, or the transitional officer program that I put into the budget, was to take your officers and bring them here.
We're aware of that.
I, I just want to ensure that we are all aware of the necessity of this partnership, especially considering that we, we need a safer community, we need that perception of safety in the community, and we are at a critical point where we have so many vacancies, our officers are overtaxed, stressed, and we want them to continue to work here and not continue to leave. So thank you, Mayor, thank you, colleagues, I appreciate it, a lot of what was discussed today.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to back up to when we were talking about traffic enforcement, so first of all, I look forward to getting that district-level data, I understand it needs to be cleaned up a little bit before it's ready to be, I guess, given to us or given to the public. I, for one, think that targeting crash data and traffic enforcement is, is a good idea for state troopers to be looking at. We don't have a lot of control over the design of state highways, we know they typically have high crash rates, and so I think that's something that, actually, I know, last budget cycle, I brought an amendment to partner with county constables to try to alleviate high levels of crashes and speeding within our community, and so I know the county at that point wasn't able to step up and help us with that, but I do think that's something that's really sensitive and can help with the road safety that we definitely need to see in this community. So I'll ask, as Councilmember Alter had mentioned before, the vision, is the Vision Zero program being consulted, or is there other crash data being used to help with these assignments?
So from the very start, we've been working with Austin Traffic, and so it is, as I hear in the discussion, a bit of a miss, a bit of confusion about violent crime and call-for-service enforcement versus traffic enforcement, because we provided traffic data related to locations for collisions, in particular injury collisions, to DPS from the very start, and so it, our, our recommendations about deployment have always included this element of traffic. Now, we do engage with Austin Traffic on a daily, on a weekly basis to provide updated information to DPS. Now, some of the things that you see in that, and I'll just give you a couple of preliminary numbers to help understand, is that in the initial deployment decisions, we were looking for the areas where we have the conjoined set of priority zero emergency calls for service, as well as pressing collision issues, right? So to understand what I mean about that, I'll just illustrate by a couple of council districts. Council District One, over the past three years, has 17.4% of traffic fatalities. Council District Two, over the same time period, has 13.3%, it's about 33% more than you'd expect, as well 14.5% of the injury collisions, right? So the initial deployment decisions saying it is exclusively driven by where violent crime calls for service are happening is not entirely correct. We provide a great deal of information, we provide updates weekly, right? Council District Three, 14.1% of individuals injured in crashes occur in District Three, and in District Four, for example, 18.1% of fatalities from crashes occur. So we've been looking at this from the very start. Beyond that, Austin Traffic has a sophisticated methodology to try to understand the more global costs of traffic collision problems, right? So this is trying to aggregate up everything that happens. That information predominantly suggests that I-35 is the most dangerous section, that needs, has the highest risk and the highest cost to the city, and that was the reason that the initial highway deployment was asked to be on I-35. Beyond that, 183 and MOPAC were added in because of a combination of the, a combination of events occurring in certain areas on those, so that's been provided. What we've asked Austin Traffic to do at this point, and they're assisting with us, again, on a weekly basis, is to begin to make recommendations for additional deployments that do not intersect with highway deployment that has already been added, and that do not intersect with areas of high calls for service for violent crimes. In other words, we're specifically now looking with Austin Traffic to find the locations where you have a high incident of collision, injury, and fatality that are not already part of the deployment strategy. The additional locations that Chief Chacon shared earlier today, 2222, 360, 290, and 71, in the vicinity of 183, in the vicinity of South First and South Congress, as well as South First and South Congress themselves, West William Cannon, West Slaughter, and Southwest Parkway are the additional areas that were not initially added into the deployment based upon the violent crime calls for service, right? Those locations have been added, driven entirely by our interactions with the data that Austin Traffic provides us with. Now, there is something that's important, and it speaks to something that you asked about earlier, is that there are data challenges with all of these things. So we talk about metrics, and we talk about performance, and wanting to understand whether or not the traffic deployments are actually showing success, right? We've had a, a pretty myopic gaze on the violent crime problem because we have the violent crime data. So I can tell you what happened last week as of Monday. We do not have the traffic data. We do not have the traffic data. The traffic data are routed to Texas Department of Transportation that provides a variety of work on the data, generally taking something in the vicinity of two to three weeks. Those data are then returned to both Austin Police Department and Austin Traffic. We each conduct a number of verification processes on the data, and then we coordinate to find discrepancies, and there are many discrepancies. So we don't have viable traffic data for analysis in many cases until 45 or 60 days after the date that we're interested in analyzing. So we've discussed a lot of the effect in terms of violent crime because we have the data in camp. We will be looking at the traffic impacts separately as those data become available, and we will be doing it in concert with Austin Traffic.
Okay. That's helpful. That was enlightening. I see why they brought the data guy. My next question is, it's going to be about booking. I have seen some things going around online about people being arrested, getting booked in the jail, and then either the charges aren't brought, they're dropped, you know. It seems like it's gumming up the system, where some people are just kind of going to the jail, but then later on, they can go about their life because the charges were dropped later on down the line. But I'm curious about, is there any difference between the way DPS and APD make these discerning phone, you know, discerning calls to make sure that we're not just gumming up a system if all it's doing is taking people away from their jobs and their families and, you know, the folks who are in charge of bringing those charges understand where we as a council have set our priorities and where our community has told us they want those priorities to be? Was that a clear enough question? See where I'm getting at?
I think so. So just to be clear, the booking process, the sheriff actually runs the county jail. With regard to whether or not a charge is accepted and moves forward is really up to our, you know, our district attorney and county attorney, outside of the control of both APD and DPS. I think what the Colonel has been pretty clear about is that he, they are going to be equitable. In other words, they are not going to pick and choose which traffic laws that they're going to enforce. And if they come across someone, for instance, that has a warrant for their arrest, we are statutorily bound to make the arrest. I mean, that's in the Code of Criminal Procedure, and doesn't matter if you're a trooper or an officer or a deputy, it's the same. So, so those folks will find themselves at the county jail. And, and as far as, you know, whether or not that is gumming up the works or not, I know that Sheriff Fernandez works very hard to, to, you know, have the jail properly staffed, to make operational decisions based on the additional number of people who might be coming into the jail based on this operation or anything else. And we try to be good partners with her as well and let her know, you know, when all this began, we had, we had conversations and it has been challenging for her as well. So we're, we're all trying to be good partners in this, but at the same time, if crimes are committed, you know, especially our crimes of violence, those folks are going to jail. If there are warrants, those folks are going to jail. So we try to just be in good communication with each other.
And I guess we'll wait and see the data on just, you know, how APD has been handling things with their discretion, how DPS is operating, given that they have taken their oath to the state and not the city. And so I just really think that data is going to be important for us to understand what the differences are, if there's two different styles of making these decisions on how to, you know, warn, give warnings, citations, or arrests depending on the potential infraction. But I just, I want to really encourage, as we have these conversations here, that we talk a lot about, you know, who feels safe and when and where. And as someone who has friends that live on the east side, I can tell you, you take a turn and you see six state troopers. That's, that's not something that I think I would feel safe, you know, if I turned the corner to my house and I saw a bunch of troopers all of a sudden. So I know that there's a commitment to making sure this is data-driven. I trust that these are very, you know, targeted exercises that y'all feel will make our community safer in the long run, but I don't want to discount when our community comes to us and says, "We are being unfairly targeted." We have to understand that is their experience and we cannot dismiss it because that makes this conversation even harder for us to get to our common community goals.
Thank you, Mayor Boettman.
I'm curious, I'm not hearing anything about the municipal court. And the municipal court has been one of the courts of consideration for arrests. What role is the muni court playing? Has that been reduced over the last couple of years?
With regard to DPS, they play no role because all of the citations go to JP Five. I believe that Justice Chu is distributed to them to the various other JP courts that need to have jurisdiction over them.
Right, wherever the arrest or the warrant was issued.
Wherever the citation was.
Citation, yeah.
Correct.
So what about muni court? What role is muni court playing these days?
That's it, they don't. When, when an Austin police officer writes a citation, it goes to municipal court. When DPS writes it, it goes to the JP court.
That's, that's what I was asking. APD is still, those warrants or citations are still going to the municipal court?
That's correct.
Okay. Are we getting some information, some data from the muni court folks to get a sense of what that looks like?
So, you want to talk about that part, Jonathan?
Yeah, and this, I appreciate it, and it's a good question. And this also speaks to the question that you asked earlier about the data, the systems, the problems, the challenges that we're working very hard to address. And that's why we're hoping in our next, in the Public Safety Committee meeting, we'll talk much more and at great length about what can be measured, what can be measured reliably, and what can be compared. So, muni court data is not APD data. Once a year, APD, to comply with CCP, prepares its racial profiling report.
Is that Code of Criminal Procedure?
Code of Criminal Procedure, yeah. And so we prepare our racial profiling data that are uploaded to the state, the summaries of stops, warnings, citations, arrests, searches. It's the same data that DPS has to put together. And so understanding the challenges that we face as a department help us understand the challenges that other departments face in trying to compile the same data. For what it's worth, we report this once a year. It takes three months to prepare. The reason it takes three months to prepare is Austin Police Department is not the legal custodian of record for citation information. Austin Municipal Court is. To understand citations, we have to ask municipal court for data. They have to provide it to us, and we have a team of engineers internally as well as theirs that work over a multiple-month period to make sure we receive reliable information on what citations have been filed in muni court. We have never had a data delivery that was accurate. We have spent months and continue to every year to go through the data, reading individual information on over 100,000 stops in order to determine which ones are valid and which ones are not. This is a data system problem. It's also a problem in that with muni court being the custodian of record for citation information, their data system has been built to support operations in muni court. It has not been built to support Austin Police Department's ability to report on citation information. So if you understand that and begin to see the challenges, that would illustrate for you why any law enforcement agency in the state would struggle to be able to provide the information requested in a timely fashion. It is a huge undertaking, right? We find a variety of things in our data that you would find in multiple other data sources. We deal with concerns about whether or not citations are accurately portraying the race of drivers with no understanding that whatever information Austin Police Department provides is often overwritten by muni court based upon their assumption. This is a perceptual measure of race, which is very different than what we're required to do, which is to ask, right? And in circumstances where a law enforcement officer does not ask by policy, then it's a perceptual measures. Taking it to muni court, it's very often that in the data, we find the same individual identified by three or four different race ethnicities, right? So this is, it is a grueling process. And so in order to provide the type of information that we should, as a city, be able to provide, we have to address some of the more fundamental underlying problems. Now, the reason that, the reason that we talked about in your question about why is it that we are asking for information to come back to us from the county attorney, again, we are not the custodian of record for that information. As I mentioned before, even DPS, that is custodian of information for their initial data relevant to it, they suffer the same types of challenges that we suffer in assembling it. And we understand that for them as well, it takes months to prepare their annual report. So all of these things are things that we are working very, very hard to address right now between both organizations, trying to make sure we're able to provide as much responsive information as possible, but I don't think there's a general public appreciation of exactly how complicated the problem is.
Is that generally the case for any municipality in the state, or is it just particularly difficult here in Austin and Travis County?
It is a characterization that you would make, and I say this based upon a previous Department of Justice project that I participated in, where we evaluated 600 municipalities' data systems. It is a problem in law enforcement agencies throughout the country, it is a problem in municipal organizations throughout the country, as well as the federal government. Most governmental data systems are not built to provide immediate reporting, they're not even built for analysis, they're built to provide an administrative support to basic operational functions. So everything that someone might learn in a class about how you would analyze data to make a claim about what it means is starting after 99% of the work has been completed. And so again, looking at the racial profile data, where we make on the order of 120,000, 130,000 stops as a department per year, in many cases, we have to read every single individual case. And so I think you can understand, you know, the complexity involved there. Now, long-term, we hope to relieve a lot of that, but this is what I speak about when I speak about the need for renovation of major data systems to make this happen.
Let me ask the city manager at this, at this point, if this information is something that administration management is aware of and, and are you looking at taking the steps to?
Well, I can appreciate what he said.
Address.
This is a common problem, and you run into this problem in healthcare as well. So, but let me get with both the chief and Jonathan and the municipal court judge, the administrator, to see what, what are the potential solutions to this.
That, that sounds really good. I know, and we would also want to be sure that the, after all of the reviews, that the data has been scrubbed sufficiently so that there's no perception and, which can lead to unrecognized bias and that the information is in fact 100% solid. I have just one more.
Can I just add one, one more point on that, Councilmember, if you don't mind? I want to be clear, this is not, we're not casting a stone at municipal court. They try very hard, and as, as Dr. Kringle was explaining, their system really isn't set up for, you know, to provide this data. They're, they're like us, trying to extract it, trying to analyze it and do things like that. So I just want to make sure that we're not, we're understanding municipal court is trying real hard and trying to be a good partner as well.
Thank you for that, and I, I believe we all recognize that. It sort of feels like 20 years ago when we were looking at Y2K and all of the administrative systems realized they were behind the eight ball and we really had to take massive efforts in order to get up to speed. And, and even though that was 20 years ago, clearly there's, there's new sources of data and new ways to analyze it and new programs and applications that will help us. The one last question that I had, Mayor, I was curious, I was looking at some of the information that was in the DPS letter and, and on the stops, and they were, they were quick descriptions. I was wondering, either from APD or DPS, have you had some cases where a stop for, say, one or two gentlemen in a car had one outcome, and then you take them in and you start questioning them, and then you realize that they have information about a larger crime that is going to be committed or is in place, and then you take that information and you have an arrest that is of much larger implications, and then maybe the people who were initially arrested may be allowed to either be let go or there's some kind of change in the circumstances of the warrant?
Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
I bet there's a really concise way to ask that question rather than all the walk-around-the-block that I took.
That's correct. Sometimes a, you know, a, what seemed like a meaningfully traffic stop, an interaction, you know, leads not just in terms of the crime where there may be a stolen vehicle and a stolen weapon in the vehicle, but from that and the discussions with that, you know, probable cause, residents that we follow up with. And in one of the enforcement operations, that's one of the advantages of having special agents integrated into it so we can move quickly. If we're able to roll somebody, get their confidence and be able to cooperate with us, we're able to quickly move and get a higher level and impact in the community. And as you know, sometimes, especially these gangs that are operating in these communities, it's very important to move quickly, and they have a disproportionate impact on the violent crime in the community.
And so then that would have some impacts on the data that would come out of the arrests and so forth, because that arrest may then either be a lower level or dismissed weeks or months later.
Exactly, and or dismissed, all the misdemeanors get dismissed and we didn't go with the felonies. So it looks like we're just got misdemeanors that are clogging up and getting dismissed, but actually we've got felonies that are being tried at a higher level.
That's good. Thank you, Mayor.
And I think you bring up a great point, Councilmember. When we look at data, it is a snapshot, a moment in time, and, and you can always guarantee that data's going to change. That's the danger of reporting, for instance, on a weekly basis, because what if next week the numbers are lower than what we reported this week, right? So I just wanted to kind of qualify that a little bit, that data, when we started talking about data, and I'm the wrong guy, I've got my data guy here to talk about all this, but those are, those are the dangers, and just understanding that piece can help to put, contextualize what we're trying to accomplish.
And I appreciate that context. I did feel like some of the information we were getting and reading about felt sort of one or two-dimensional, and I really wanted to see a 360-degree, three-dimensional kind of a picture. I think we're getting closer to that. I think there's more work clearly that will be done and more information that will be analyzed and presented to us. Sounds like it will take time, and I think that's legitimate in order to get accuracy. And I thank you all for being here today.
Mayor, could I just?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just want to, because I think we focused on a lot of things that we need to put together in terms of information. But I, but I just, because I know the council must feel a sense of pride and satisfaction about what this partnership did when they apprehended that gentleman that had the 14-year-old. Sometimes we lose sight of the fact that that 14-year-old girl that was being trafficked, we were able to change her life and her family's life. And I know that this council and the mayor take a deep pride and satisfaction that it was because this partnership helped, at least in that one instance, with real tangible results. And I hope as we bring that data, we'll continue to do that on into the future.
Councilmember Vela?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just start off with a comment on, I'm very hesitant to make any kind of conclusions off of 30 days of data when we're talking about something as volatile and as difficult to track as crime data. I mean, it goes up and down for many reasons. There's a lot of factors that are rolled into it, economic, social, and I just want to be very careful that, again, that old kind of statistical, that correlation does not indicate causality. In other words, you know, just because you have two numbers that are linked does not mean that one number is driving the other, especially when we're talking about aggravated assaults, which lots of unreported aggravated assaults, lots of unreported robberies, lots of unreported sexual assault. So we're really just getting a very limited snapshot into the world of kind of crime. And I just want to be very, very careful when we're talking about the data and, and its effect. With that, and I want to say, the Director McGraw, I, from the feedback that we've been getting with regard to the DPS troopers, I have not received any allegations that the troopers are individually racially profiling anybody. That is not the concern, that they're specific targeting for, you know, racial reasons of this person or that person. But that's not the only type of discrimination and disparate impact there is. I mean, I think about, for example, like, you know, redlining, which, the old practice of not loaning to areas where we know that there was a lot of, of black and brown households. You know, that didn't individually target any race, it was geographically based. And so that's more the disparate impact that I'm concerned about, where, you know, you have a community that is being targeted with patrols, and you get into this kind of self-fulfilling prophecy where, you know, you're like, oh, that's a high-crime area. Well, that is a high-crime area because that's where the cops are always at, that's where the cops are always arresting people. And again, especially when we're seeing a large number of the arrests that are based on low-level possession of controlled substance types of things, my understanding, a lot of vape cases, a lot of, you know what I mean, very small amounts of cocaine and methamphetamine and other kind of pills, prescription pills that are being abused. And again, you see things like drug use relatively constant across communities. I mean, you could probably do that- I mean, you could probably do that same type of stop in far west or in, you know, in the Mayor Pro Tem's district and find quite a number of DWIs and quite a number of drug possession cases. So I mean, how do you feel about that in terms of the kind of the cycle there of kind of constantly targeting a community and the long-term? I understand that the targeted patrols in the short term can absolutely work to suppress them. How do you feel about as a long-term strategy, kind of continuing to focus on a neighborhood like Montoplis or in my district, the Lamar kind of Runberg intersection?
Well, you're asking me. Certainly, we, from our department standpoint, want to see able to get a baseline where crime has been produced. At the end of the day, the chief and the department, we agree that, hey, there's been a substantial decrease in violent crime. There's other places. What happens is that it moves. And as it moves, we adapt and move to those locations. And it's really not targeting a neighborhood. We're really targeting crime in the neighborhood. And really, we're about protecting that neighborhood from crime. So that's, we've got different terms, and I think that's an important part. We view our role as to go in and when you, if you see six police officers or six troopers when you turn around, you should feel safe, not threatened. You should feel like, finally, we've got some protection from us. And that's why I really do believe that when we talk to members with the community, that most of the members and your constituents that actually appreciate in terms of us, what we're doing right now, what we think it's important. So as it relates to the long-term success and strategic planning, I leave that to the chief.
Well, I appreciate the comments, councilmember. And I certainly understand what you're talking about. This is part of the overall training that we're doing at the department right now about systemic institutional racism. What I would say is that the way that we set this partnership up from the beginning was all going to be call-driven. Not necessarily troopers showing up in a neighborhood and simply looking for stuff, but what are the neighborhoods that are actually calling for service and putting them in those, you know, putting them in those neighborhoods? As we have, as this has, we're now in the fourth, I think the fourth week just completed. We're now in the fifth week. We have seen those areas of those calls for service decrease. And they are transitioning out of those neighborhoods and moving into others. So, you know, you've not been able to really observe that yet because we're only, as you said, 30 days into the operation. But that certainly is happening. I'm not sure if you want to add to that, Dr. Kring?
No, I appreciate it too, right? Because this is, this is at the core of the discussion is, we know at a level approaching certainty, and we will know certainly very soon, that the directed patrol is reducing violent crime. We know that as a result of it being consistent with every other true experiment ever run on it in the U.S. that was methodologically rigorous. We know that as a matter of the analysis that we do, which is remarkably more complicated than what we're looking at here, which is just a summary. So we're relatively certain that this is reducing violent crime. We will approach certainty very soon, given the power of the data that we have to look at. But the way it plays out, the way it impacts people in your district is a huge concern. Unfortunately, we can't have a discussion about that without having a discussion of the people that it benefits. And so there are hard truths related to the way in which race and ethnicity cluster and the way in which the locations of calls for service occur. So for example, Council District Four, 55% of the violent crime victims are Hispanic. Right? Council District Three, 63% of the violent crime victims are Hispanic. Right? And this continues to play out based upon the same demographic clustering that we see in the city. So the challenge that we have to navigate, and I think it speaks to what the long-term plan is, is how do we realize violent crime reductions to support those individuals? While at the same time making sure that the long-term plan is not simply these are the locations that we'll be focused on? And so that's already occurring. And so the other element, which is very relevant to what you said about 30 days of data, is we're looking at, you know, the initial couple of weeks of deployment. As of week three, we started requesting some transition to other areas. Right? And this is a process that will occur over time. Right? So those calls for service, we'll monitor them every week. Right? And we'll provide that information to DPS. And they're going to move their troopers around because the victimization is going to continue in other areas that aren't receiving the same level of service. So I think that those are some things that we want to incorporate in as we talk, maybe in the Public Safety Committee meeting, about what are some of the goals of the project? And how are we going to measure those things? There are a variety of different things that we need to look at in great detail.
And I appreciate the partnership with regard to a focus on your serious crimes, your serious traffic accidents, your fatalities on the roadways. I think that is critical. Right now, my sense of where we're at, and again, I understand the kind of goal and focus of the directed patrols, but what we're doing is really, for lack of a kind of better term, a vehicular stop and frisk kind of situation where we are targeting traffic enforcement in a certain area. And the byproduct of that traffic enforcement is arrests for possession of controlled substance, arrests for, you know, outstanding warrants, arrests for stolen vehicles. I mean, that's my sense of the strategy right now. Can we use the troopers in a way that's more directly linked to violent crime in the sense of pending casework, you know, following up on investigation? Like, you know what I mean? That second order, you know, not just going out on patrol, but can we use them? I mean, one of the areas, and this is not, I guess, a violent crime technically, but one of the concerns that my constituents have expressed to me is that on burglaries, on home burglaries, it's tough to get an officer out there to personally respond. And sometimes they're just told to go ahead and just file the report online, where that, you know, a little, the human touch there, you know, a little bit of customer service go a long way in, again, as a mayor has said, the perception of public safety. Maybe it doesn't mean anything, you know, in terms of whether you just file the report online or whether the officer shows up for a couple of minutes to talk with the homeowner. But people sure feel better when they have that human touch. Can we shift also in that direction?
Well, certainly not with troopers, I can tell you that. And the advantage of directed patrol is them being at the right place at the right time, you know, based upon the data, is that that burglary didn't happen. Okay? That crime doesn't happen. So the whole point is, is to be preventive, not enforcement-generated. You know, it's not about numbers, it's about arrests, about seizures, about... At the end of the day, is the place safer because the crimes are not being committed? Are we a deterrent from criminals and bad actors committing robberies, takeover robberies, burglaries, a burglar ring in that regard? By being present in a sufficient area in that regard? And let the data, and follow the data. I think that's the advantage of it. So using patrols, the great advantage of using patrol is to prevent something from happening. Okay? Not just enforcing something. Now, you ought to be busy when you're out there. You don't just sit out on the side of the road and do nothing. You enforce state laws. Using special agents, which is a part of a different strategy, working closely with APD, you know, officers, investigators. Now we can target the underlying part. You don't necessarily see that because the results of that may take months sometimes in terms of an impact when you take out a network or you take out a clique. Or, and this Texas Syndicate is very prominent in Austin. You're able to take out a network that's been involved in robberies and stash houses. All those things are, you know, conducive to decreasing violent crime. But you've got to look at all the different strategies. And I think that's what the chief is doing, is looking at the totality of tools that we can use. But I wouldn't underestimate directed patrols.
Right, I just want to, what you're talking about, you know, for a long time, that's what APD did when our staffing was at the level that we could do it. And what has driven down our ability to do that is the lack of staff, the lack of sworn officers that are in patrol cars to go and make those, make those calls and do that bit of customer service that you're talking about. We end up having to push everybody 311. I just want to reiterate that we have, what we've asked DPS to do is not to take those calls because, you know, that trooper shows up and writes a report, then goes to, back to wherever, whatever part of the state that they're from. We want to keep that, you know, here centralized in Austin with APD handling all of the 911 service calls that we handle. And then, of course, a lot of those are still being pushed to 311. The long game on that is getting our staffing back up. Once our staff is back at 100%, we can start doing those kind of things again. And we're not in a position to do it today.
And I appreciate that and like, I understand, and I wouldn't dispute that targeted patrol is going to have an effect on crime in the targeted area. I guess I would ask that we're also be sensitive to the collateral consequences of targeted patrol in minority neighborhoods where we're seeing young kids pick up felony cases, you know, get their cars towed, get those, you know, those are major events and can be quite damaging for the folks involved. Again, not saying that we're just going to, you know, let folks, you know, run around unpoliced or unsupervised, but the, I think the cost benefit, when you're looking especially at your kind of low-level possession of controlled substance arrests, I struggle with that one to see if that's really the approach that we want to take long-term in really targeting kind of the, yeah, again, I, we're still getting the numbers, but a bunch of vape cases and a bunch of very kind of low-level drug cases, which that, I'm uncomfortable with that approach. Or I'm concerned about the collateral consequences in particular.
The low-level marijuana possessions, those are, we do the same thing that the chief does, is we abide by the county attorney in that regard. And cite and release is the policy of the county attorney, and that's what we do. So we don't arrest, we don't custody arrest for marijuana possession for small amounts.
But my understanding is that DPS is arresting for the vape cases, which would be the, you know, hash basically, the state jail felonies under the state laws.
You know, if it's a state law and it rises to a state jail felony, yes, we do. And same thing with minor amounts of methamphetamine, cocaine, heroin, do the same.
And Chief, is APD arresting for, like, less than a gram cases where the DA is declining prosecution on a lot of those, you know, small cases?
So the policy that we have generally is to go ahead and seize the drug. And then we will, depending, you know, at that point, if they can't determine on scene whether or not it's going to rise above that level or not, seize the drug, fully identify the person, we can always obtain a warrant at a later time, once the drug has been analyzed. And, you know, if we don't feel that it is part of a larger, you know, criminal conduct, course of criminal conduct or something like that, or that it still represents some kind of danger to the public, if that makes sense. We will make arrests in those cases, but the district attorney's been clear, he'll accept those cases. But we will, if it is a simple possession case, generally, we're seizing the drug and writing it up.
Okay. And then just a handful, and these are more kind of technical questions that have come up with, from my criminal defense colleagues. My understanding, Chief, is that when an APD officer makes an arrest, he or she has to have the PCA affidavit turned in by the end of shift? Is that correct?
So I think state law is for misdemeanor arrest, yep, it's within 24 hours of felony, 48 hours, and that's our timelines.
There's no internal policy guidance at APD?
No, we comply with state law.
You comply with state law?
By policy.
All right. And Director McGraw, is that a similar DPS policy?
We comply with state law.
Okay. I just, my concerns against...
And with the discretion of the U.S. prosecutor, of the prosecuting attorney.
And the concern that has been expressed to me is that the DPS in, APD is generally speaking, turning in the PCA affidavit, you know, six to eight hours, 10 hours or so after the arrest, which allows for a quick magistration and bonding. You know, in other words, you arrest a person, get them in, get them out. You know, most of these are misdemeanor cases where bond is not really a concern, a personal bond will be issued. It has been expressed to me that the troopers are taking longer and that is kind of disrupting our jail operations as well, you know, taking 24, 30 hours. And again, understanding that they have the full 48 hours. But in terms of, you know, our staffing expectations at the jail, and I will say just our criminal kind of bar expectations, there's a desire to see those kind of move more quickly through the system so we don't have these backups at the bonding desk and we can keep our jail population, you know, as low as we need to. We don't want people in there any longer than they need to be.
Understood.
And again, I would just ask that, you know, those kinds of operational concerns with regard to the processing, just to be aware of those and let's see what we can do.
Yes, sir. We'll look into it. Especially so since we're bringing a lot of people into the area of operation, the number of arrests are going up. So that's kind of an impact. And we don't want, we understand there's another bandwidth to it, including magistrations, including defense and including certainly the judges.
And I have some more questions, but I know we've been at it for a while, I'll yield.
Councilmember Velazquez and then Councilmember Harper-Madison.
Thank you all for being here with us today. I also wanted to thank the community members that have continued to press us for answers so that we'd be able to bring them to you all. And I want to thank the mayor for taking time to meet with me and a couple of my colleagues yesterday and to work to align with us on this recalibration of what this partnership looks like. I had a few questions and just clarifying questions. I know we may have answered them already, but just, this operation is 100 troopers?
We're deploying 80 troopers and we're deploying 20 special agents alone with 80 troopers.
Okay. The troopers are not asking about immigration status?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not a violation of law. Immigration status is not a violation of state law.
Okay. And Colonel, you said this earlier, but again, just to clarify, that our chief of police is in charge of this operation?
That's correct.
Okay. For our chief and Doctor, thank you all both for being here. The call numbers, the call numbers that initiated the original presence in certain areas, can we have those for the 22nd meeting? The call numbers that justified the initial presence in certain areas, can we have those for the 22nd meeting?
Yeah, the 22nd meeting, we'll be looking at, we'll be looking at all of the different intervals that have been looked at since we began.
Okay. And I wanted to thank my colleagues here. You all asked the majority of the questions that I had, so it was a lot easier lift for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Velazquez. Let's go to Councilmember Harper-Madison.
Thank you, Mayor Burton, I appreciate it. I'll echo my colleagues' appreciation for everybody who's here today and presenting for us today. I wish I could have been there in person, but out of abundance of caution, I'm going to keep my fever self at home. I will say this, I appreciate the questions that have been asked already. I think they echo some of my concerns, questions, and those of my constituents as well. I think my question is less data-driven and maybe specifically less data-driven. I'm concerned about an exclusively data-driven approach to law enforcement. I think there are some very real implications that I think some of my colleagues alluded to earlier. I know that District One folks are reeling from some of the implications of law enforcement involvement. And I just, I wanted to ask, you know, Dr. Kring, specifically, I know, as a doctor, you know, your approach is methodical. You know, you're a scientist, right? You're supposed to look at the statistics, the data. I just wonder if there's any room for us to approach this from an approach that's not driven by data, that speaks to some of the specific social implications around what it is that we're discussing. I won't speak specifically to the bulleted items. I will say, I wonder if there's an opportunity here for us to not exclusively operate on data, given that we have a complex city, we live in a complex state, we're complex people, and a lot of our issues are underlying. So we could say, you know, let's call it an octopus, right? It's got tentacles, eight of them, maybe more, that aren't rooted in data. They're rooted in poverty. They're rooted in social justice. They're rooted in social injustice. They're rooted in racism. They're rooted in overpolicing. I just, I haven't heard once yet, I'm hearing a lot about the data, which I appreciate. That's definitive. So I appreciate that. What I'm not hearing is the, our opportunity to reconcile as a people, as a state and as a city, lies within our ability to not operate exclusively by the letter of the law. In which case, while I can appreciate y'all's job is to uphold the law, to serve and protect, I'm very concerned that there's no room to consider the complexities that introduce themselves just simply by way of who we are as a people and how we arrived here and why those areas are so heavily policed. So I'll give you a good example. I brought... I brought up recently in one of our committee meetings, that I know that there are bars on North Lamar and other parts of the city where people are driving home drunkity-drunk. I know that because I have friends who work in law enforcement, friends who work at AFD, friends who work in EMS. I know that they are making very, like, frequent calls to specific places. We could target those, we could take a map and show you exactly where the problematic areas are. The thing is, though, those problematic areas don't lie exclusively within the areas that are being targeted. I also know that in Lakeway, my Lakeway cop friends are making the same calls that they make off of Run Bird. I know that in, you know, D6, Anderson Mill, I know that my Anderson Mill cop friends are making the same calls that they make in D3, 2, 1, and 4, but there aren't troopers there, in which case, my question is, maybe it's not a question so much as I'm expressing a concern about there not being any room for the observation around the nuance. And I appreciate everybody who's here in their professional capacity, and I recognize that your job is not to recognize, appreciate, and massage the nuance, but there is the nuance. And I'd like to know, how do we, as a body, work with the chief and with the state to recognize the nuance, because it does exist?
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'm getting some feedback, sorry. I appreciate exactly what you're talking about, and like I said, you know, as we approached--
I don't mean to interrupt, when you say you appreciate exactly what I'm talking about, would you mind elaborating explicitly?
The nuanced--
What do you think I'm saying? I want to make sure we're saying the same thing.
Certainly. I think that what you just stated, and I'll try and restate it succinctly, is you don't think that necessarily a strictly evidence-based approach may be best for our community, and in fact, this is more of a nuanced issue that we should look at in a more nuanced way, is that accurate?
You're getting close. I would say, evidence-based, based on what? How are you collecting the evidence? How is the data being collected? And I'm saying this, I could say anecdotally, but I could also say based on, I literally was married to a public servant for the better part of two decades. I know for a fact that the same crimes that are being committed in some of these areas, and we're talking about the prevention of violent crime, right? I know that the same crimes that are being committed in some of these areas, which, that's the part where I'm talking, this is the nuanced bubble, let's call that the nuanced bubble. That's poverty, that's deep poverty, deep poverty, based on racism, and years and years of oppression. And then, over here, we have this other bubble, where people get to commit crimes in silence and secret because they're rich, and nobody's watching them. So, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we reconcile the imbalance, recognizing that, you know, and I think that the good doctor here might be the one to speak to it. Statistically, there are no fewer crimes being committed over here than there are over here, but these people who struggle the hardest once you involve criminal justice in their lives, like, the layers of getting hemmed up for a poor person, I can't tell you, it's like, irreconcilable. So frequently, these people cannot pull themselves back out of that criminal justice involvement, whereas these folks over here can hire a good attorney, never happened. I just am having a difficult time speaking to my constituents, knowing what I know, anecdotally, statistically, et cetera, I'm having a difficult time speaking to my constituents about the imbalance. It's happening over here and over here, so why only over here is being enforced? And even if you enforce over here, are fully recognized, then people can hire badass attorneys, it never happened, right? I do realize that, but I just don't think the data is showing us that it's being balanced in terms of the execution, and so I guess, in some ways, I'm asking you to be able to speak to the nuance that is, Chief, you know, you and I have a good relationship, and we talk about, you know, some of the underlying factors, right? Like, some of the things that create crime have to do with who we are as a people, as a state, and as a city, and the things that we force people to do, force them to do, they're trying to survive. That said, I think it's difficult to speak to the nuance, but I would like to know that you all are recognizing that it exists, and then, I think, as a secondary measure, I'm asking that we just balance it out.
Well, I agree with you that it's difficult to discuss, because apparently I was off the mark, but you're right, I am trying to, in discussions with you and other council members, and with our community, strike that balance. I'm making a commitment to strike the balance.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick. ATXN, can I see the chief's face? I can't see him. Can you switch the angle to where I can see his face?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am--
I like to look at a person's eyeballs when I'm talking to them.
Certainly. Being able to strike the balance, and that is what I have been talking about as this operation moves forward, is, I clearly recognize, you know, I think we can point to the data all day long, and how the data is moving in the right direction, you know, when it comes to violent crime. Violent crime is one of the most visible parts when we talk about law enforcement, and we may not see that, those other parts that you're talking about, but I think that how it affects these communities matters to me, and as a leader of this organization, I'm gonna work with the director to adjust, so that we are not having the unintended impacts that we might be having, and then to be very transparent with this council about what those moves actually look like, so that we can, you know, I'll definitely continue to take the input from all of the council members about how y'all would like to see policing done in this city, and work with our partners at DPS to hit the mark as closely as we can.
I'll leave it with this, I think it sounds soft, which is unfortunate, right? Because it doesn't sound definitive, but the true implications, and I think, maybe I'm best as a storyteller, right? The true implications of having somebody who's already struggling get another infraction means their family suffers deeply, they suffer deeply, it's almost impossible to recover when you're a person who is so deeply entrenched in poverty and already has some law enforcement You have to forgive me, I'm not normally at a loss of words, I'm a chatty Cathy. I'm just, I'm struggling to find a way to speak to my constituents about what's transpiring currently, and to show that I am actively engaged, but here's the thing, none of my constituents are surprised by the disparity numbers. Y'all know that, none of them are surprised. It's shocking, but not surprising, because they're accustomed to this. They are used to this kind of disparate treatment, and I'm just really hoping that all y'all folks sitting up there who do this, y'all are the professionals, I'm deferring to your professional advice. What do I tell my people when they ask me, why aren't those dudes who I know who are selling cocaine and Wesley not getting shook up, like the dudes over here in D4 getting shook up? I don't understand the difference, I understand that the violent crime component is, it sounds like that's the driver, but it also originates somewhere. And so, crimes that start in Terrytown, that land in D4, land D4 people in trouble, and not Terrytown people in trouble, and I'm just, I guess I'm just really wanting to lodge my deep concern about the disparity, and wanting to say explicitly out loud, I'd like very much for us to move forward as a team, as a collective effort, but we gotta look at the whole city, and we also have to be fully aware of the nuance behind some of the criminal activity, and I think exclusively operating by way of data means that we're not looking at humans. Jesus said, "There will always be the poor." He wasn't just saying poverty, he was saying, "There will always be the poor," meaning there will always be people we have to look out for. And I think there's no lack of room in law enforcement for deploying Jesus' will, and saying, "There will always be the poor, there's always gonna be people we gotta look out for," and if you're exclusively operating on data, then you put people in hard spots who are already in a hard spot. And I think the touch, the personal touch that comes with, some of the APD officers that I know for a fact bring that personal touch, that customer service, they bring that to the people. I'm just very concerned and curious about whether or not those officers are sharing that capacity with our brothers and sisters in DPS, to deploy that personal touch and to recognize nuance, because if we're exclusively operating on data and smashing crime, we're not looking at humans. That is all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ryan Alter.
Thank you, Colonel McCraw, I want to just start by recognizing, you know, the troopers who work for you who are coming to Austin from across the state, you know, that is a difficulty, leaving their home to come here, and so, I do want to express our thanks for their work, and, you know, taking a week away from their families potentially to come here, and so, you know, we talk about humans, and they're humans on all sides of this equation, but I also want to talk about getting it right. You know, I think that we talk a lot about safety and safety in our communities, and that's important, that's part of getting it right, but getting it right is also people feeling comfortable in their community, right? We've heard from our, my other colleagues here who represent other areas of Austin, who have their constituents who might not necessarily feel comfortable seeing numerous officers, whether they're APD, DPS, or otherwise, in their community, and so, to tie a little bit on what Councilmember Harper-Madison was talking about, the data driving this effort, you know, I think oftentimes, we use the term "data-driven" because we want to use that as a proxy for race-neutral, right? The "data-driven" doesn't always mean something is race-neutral, given the history that has led to where we are today, and so, I think if you saw a word cloud of today, though, you would, data would be front and center, as big as it gets, right? And so, I do want to ask a little bit about some of the geography data, and I think when we have discussions amongst our constituencies or out in the public, there are gaps, you know, we have heard about where people, where are troopers going, or where are you sending them, and if we don't have the ability to show them that, they're going to fill in the gaps themselves. And so, what I, I guess my first question's for you, Colonel McCraw, when you ticket somebody, do you put an address on there where that occurs, or how is there a location tied to it?
Yes, yes, we've got to locate everything we do.
Okay.
And including warnings, and I can tell you that, you know, I mean, community-based policing really starts with every encounter that we have with a citizen, and sometimes the most important public safety thing we do is change a flat tire, it doesn't matter what it is, if it's about public safety. So, and we take great pride in this thing called courtesy, is part of our motto, I questioned it when I first got into recruit school, why would we have courtesy, we're law enforcement, but what I didn't realize at the time is that is so important in what we do, because everyone deserves to be treated with dignity and respect, regardless of them, and there's value in it, in the law enforcement profession. If you treat everybody that way, I don't care if it's a, if someone is a child molester, I don't care if it's a terrorist, I don't care if it's a gang member, I don't care if it's a cartel operative, you treat them with dignity and respect, you treat them in a courteous manner, in a professional manner, and that's the only way you're gonna be able to do things that you were able to do in terms of consent, and cooperation, and sometimes confessions, and save a child from having to testify against an adult in a court about what happened to her. And so, it also builds a type of respect from a profession, I won't call it a professional relationship, but a relationship with the criminal element in that regard, so they know that when they deal with a DPS officer, like an APD officer, it can be a professional officer that takes their job seriously, their oath seriously, and they're gonna be treated, you know, well in that interaction. And we hold troopers accountable for a number of reasons, and I'll list it in the letter in terms of the things that we can do and go back and look at, and, you know, if we can find just one trooper that was discourteous, which I don't, I've yet to find one thus far in this operation, I'm sure there'll be an example, we got people, we make mistakes at times, and I got that, but it's our, we want to walk away from here, like we have in other areas of the country, in the state, is where the people want us back, okay? If something bad happens, because we're good partners with APD, and because we acted professionally, and that were the communities we go into, is not to enforce, but to protect, you know, from the criminal element that's in those communities, and that's why we say "data-driven," we like to use that, not just because to avoid race discussions, but because it just makes sense and it works to go where the crime is. We can go work where the crime's not, okay? We can go work where the crashes are not, it just doesn't make any sense to do so, the law of large numbers. You know, you focus in terms of where it matters, and you do so, and I think that's enough from me.
I appreciate that, and I assume the answer's same for us, when we cite somebody, there's an address on there, some geography element?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I would ask, and I may not even need to ask, but whenever there is the sharing of data, that we include the geographical element, so that, you know, I've yet to see a map, and I think that's really important, if people could see where the deployments have been, and I understand not wanting to forward-forecast that, makes complete sense, but understanding where this has actually taken place, and even overlaying, you know, the heat maps of the types of crime that has driven you to make that decision, you know, fill in these gaps for us so that people aren't just filling in themselves, and I think is really important. And when you are deploying or asking, I'm not exactly sure how that ask goes, but is there any kind of documentation involved on your end of, you know, I requested them to go to these three sectors this week, or how are we tracking that?
No, nothing as formal as that. We have meetings, you know, I've mentioned it several times, I talked to Director Luciano, who's over it on a daily basis, sometimes multiple times a day, about what, you know, what the partnership looks like, and then I know that, you know, our data folks are working with their data folks closely to be able to provide the information, and then ultimately, that is briefed out. I think the Colonel mentioned, you know, they're here, they come in, and so, on that day, when the new, the new troopers arrive for their period, members of DPS leadership and APD leadership are there to greet them, to thank them, and also to provide the clear instruction on what the expectations are, you know, APD leadership will talk about, you know, what is the Austin, you know, kind of, what can they expect for those that have never been in Austin before, and to help frame that up for them, so, but nothing as formal as what you're talking about.
And lastly, I know, as you mentioned, y'all are coming to the May 22nd meeting, I think it would be very helpful for us, as we talk about data, not just to talk about effects, but, as I mentioned, how we've arrived at some of these recommendations of where individuals go, so that, you know, when we do talk about it being a data-driven approach, that you, that we understand, this was the data, these are the data we looked at that drove this particular week, or this particular decision, just so that we can have both sides of the equation, not just what happened, but how we got there.
No, and I appreciate that, and so, I appreciate your comments, and I'll also say I appreciate Harper-Madison's previous comments about it, because this is, at the core of the discussion, is where and why, right? And so, there, you know, and my kind of position on it is that numbers don't make decisions, people make decisions, right? Our goal is to produce factually correct numbers, so that the discussion is constrained to that which is true, right? And so, so that we're looking-- And so, so that we're looking at really specific information, like District One being 20% black, right? But violent victims in District One being 40% black, or the fact that District One has 18.4% of the traffic fatalities that occur. And so, while we talk about if there is underlying distributional inequity, there are challenges to any implementation, and there are collateral consequences, I think, as Councilmember Vela said, right? And those things are necessarily part of the discussion, but we also have to maintain the focus on that discussion of who's being victimized, who's being injured, and/or, you know, and what are the fatalities that are happening in accidents? And so, but that should support a robust discussion that leads to the decisions and whatnot. And so, we'll work to try to provide a lot more additional information in the work session where we'll have more time, and so that we can get kind of integrated details about that. You know, there are other numbers that are really important for everyone to understand. Why do you make allocation decisions? So, some numbers that we probably haven't shared is that over the past few years, going back to, say, 2019, 2020, if you look at, before our staffing challenges really began to become pronounced, if you look at the number of working officers on patrol in Austin, it ranges, averages about 650, right? When it went really low, it went down into 620, 630, right? And other times, it would staff back up, and it would get up to 680, 690, right? Currently, we have fewer than 500 patrol officers. So, DPS has shared that they're loaning us 80 troopers, putting us somewhere in the vicinity of 580 individuals working patrol. So, we have a resource problem. Even with the troopers in town, we have a huge resource problem. Beyond that, there's pretty substantial evidence that that historic number of 650 is actually not sufficient, given changes in the city, and looking back to, when did Austin actually get that much patrol in place, which goes back very, very far, a substantial number of years into the decades. And so, we're looking at 580 individuals as resources, and we're making operational decisions about 500 of them. And we're asking DPS to make operational decisions about 80 of them. And we're trying to achieve as much as is possible, given those things. And that's where we go back to where we began the entire discussion with the goals. We know that the response times that people, as individuals, experience when calling 911 for an ongoing violent event are exceedingly problematic. We know all of the challenges that we face to get the phone call, to get it into dispatch, to get an officer there. And when we add that time up, the time differences have a huge impact on the outcomes, right? Whether or not there is, we talk about the law enforcement outcomes, is an arrest made, right? Is a firearm recovered? And those are really important. Is the victim injured, right? That's also exceedingly important. And so, we know, looking at a tremendous amount of historic data, that those response times matter to those outcomes and others that are, you know, socially important. And so, our question is, how do we deploy effectively 580 people, which is at a minimum 70 under what we would normally operate with? And how do we do that to get that call-for-service time down? So, we started with calls for service. Where are people asking us to go to the most risky calls for service? And some of the things that we haven't given the resource level and whatnot, the number of things we're trying to pull together that we haven't been able to report on yet are, what's happening to the APD officers who are working those areas in those times? We know their response times are going down. But I can tell you as a matter of, at a level of certainty, that if you go back five years in APD data, back when the city was a little bit different, right? Back when there were more officers working and more officers working patrol, officers did actually have time to engage in officer-initiated activities, including things like community policing, including that personal touch, et cetera, right? We know, going back to 2016, it was recommended to get that somewhere in the vicinity of about 35% of officer time. That also supports officer health and wellness, right? And so, the, but we know over time, as we lost staff, that's gone away. Officers at this point, on shifts from APD, are jumping from called-for-service to call-for-service. It's exceedingly stressful, it has an impact on wellness, it has an impact on morale and retention, but probably most importantly, it has an impact on the experience of the individual that they're gonna engage with, right? So, we look at a staff that is overworked, overstressed, right, that can't address a number of problems. So, these are the things that we also need to look at. The initial indication is that with the DPS deployment in these areas, where our officers were working the most frantic work schedule, that some of that time is coming back, just a little bit of time to come back, to say, "I need a moment to this. I just wanna talk to this person here about this thing I think they might have seen. Maybe they need something," right? So, there are all of these, like, human element aspects of it that you're, it's correct, we're not measuring them right now, right? And this is all a balance. How do we get those fatalities from collisions, from crashes down? How do we get the injuries from crashes down? How do we get the violent crime victimization that disproportionately affects certain demographic groups in certain areas? How do we get that down, right? And so, all of those things are things that we hope to be able to bring to the table when we discuss the issues in the Public Safety Committee. But it is very important that everyone understand the context, that without the DPS troopers, we would be on the order of 30% or higher on our staffing with patrol, right, understaffed. And so, it's a remarkable problem in terms of its impact, both on citizens, as well as the city's staff who work in law enforcement.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Colonel, for being here. I know you didn't have to be here. And so, we do appreciate you coming and answering our questions. And thank you, Chief. I'm sure we can get it right. We're smart enough as a city to do it. So, thank you.
With that, thank you all very much for being here, Colonel. I agree with Councilmember Alter. Thank you for taking so much of your time today and being so responsive to us. Chief, thank you. Thank you, Doctor. And thank you, Council, for a very thorough, important discussion. Thank you very much. Thank you all.